Good afternoon. I am calling to order the March 23 policy session of the Phoenix City Council. You'll notice that I am sitting at the table normally reserved for staff today in thinking that we had four council members attending and so to implement appropriate social distancing, we may adjust as we learn more about who is joining us in person and by phone. I live in a multi-generational household with family members who have compromised immune systems and so trying to do my part to keep everyone healthy and still help make sure we are doing our part for the people of Phoenix. I want to begin this policy session with a moment of silence. If appropriate, please consider our employee who passed last week in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. Last week, we learned that one of our beloved aviation employees had passed away. It's a crushing loss for this employee's family and for the city of Phoenix's family. I've heard from so many about the joy that he brought to his work, that he was a pleasure to work with, liked by everyone. He was a man who loved his family and lovingly took care of his mother. To his family, we are thinking of you. To his coworkers, we cannot understand what you are going through but know that it is a difficult time and we will hope that we can find, although we cannot find the words, hopefully we can find resources to help you as you navigate this. Another reason we are so deeply saddened by this employee's passing is that while we can take the time to honor him today, there may be a time in coming days, weeks, and months where because of the growing number of deaths, we will not be able to give each individual who's passed the same reverence. But we should also know that with swifter action, the number of individuals who lose their lives can decline and that we can all do our part to stop the spread of this devastating virus. I want to turn it over to our city manager, Ed Zirker, for a city manager update.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We have a very full agenda of information for you today. Before we get there on the reports and budget updates, I just wanted to make a note that our chief financial officer, Denise Olson, and our deputy city manager, Jeff Barton, are working right now on economic, financial, and budget scenarios and forecasts that will allow us to give you as the council some options for a 2020-21 budget and we'll be prepared with further details on that by the end of the week so we can advise you on those decisions. The first council decision on a budget would be on May 19 when a proposed budget would be voted on by the council. We will, of course, present that well in advance of May 19 and be in discussion with you about that. Those are my reports and updates, Mayor.
Thank you. Can our assistant city manager please introduce the next item?
Mayor, actually, before Milton goes, I'll just give a quick overview of what we're going to have today. First, Milton will introduce Dr. Rebecca Sunenshine, the medical director for Maricopa County Health Department. That will be followed by Milton describing an update on our emergency operations planning. One of the things you'll hear today is that across the country, different states and localities are ordering shutdowns by their governing authorities. And in preparation, Milton has been working with all of our departments on the preparation necessary should any such order be given here in Arizona and he'll walk you through what our planning is like. After that, we will hear from our two chiefs about what they're seeing in the public safety departments. That will be followed by discussion from our human resources director about the protocols we've developed for employee notification during this time and thank you, Mayor, for recognizing our employee in that. And then we will have time for council direction on items that have come up or questions. With that, I'll turn it over to Milton to introduce our first speaker.
Thank you, Ed. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. We are pleased to be joined telephonically this afternoon by Dr. Rebecca Sunenshine. She is the medical director for Disease Control at Maricopa County Health Department and is a captain in the U.S. Public Health Service. As a CDC career epidemiology field officer assigned to Arizona since July of 2006, she has served at the Arizona Department of Health Services for four years and the Maricopa County Department of Health since 2010. She is trained in internal medicine and infectious diseases and we are very pleased to have her with us. Dr. Sunenshine, the floor is yours.
Good afternoon, everyone. Is this slide presentation up and ready to go?
Yes, it is.
Okay, great. So I'm just going to switch to that first slide from the title page. And I know a lot of you have probably seen some of this information before but we wanted to just start by getting everyone on the same page and making sure that you're aware of exactly what COVID-19 is and also what it isn't. So COVID-19 is a new coronavirus or novel coronavirus that has not been previously identified. And what that means is that our bodies have never seen it before and presumably we don't have any immunity to it. Most other viruses that go around, we've seen at some point, at least a variety of that virus at some point in our lives and we have some immunity. Coronaviruses normally cause the common cold. In fact, they cause about 30% of the common cold that we see in general. So this one, COVID-19, causes respiratory illness ranging from a very mild cold to severe pneumonia. Symptoms typically start two to 14 days after someone is exposed to an infected person but usually we see the disease start in about four to five days. And we know from data in China that most people, or over 80%, who are diagnosed have mild disease. And it's really important for people who are reading articles and watching the TV to know that the numbers that they're showing don't represent everyone who has the disease. They're only representing people who are diagnosed with the disease. And so whenever you see a death rate or a hospitalization rate, those numbers are always inflated and in public health, we take into account how many people are out there that haven't been diagnosed, which are usually the milder cases or even cases with no symptoms at all. Next slide. So COVID-19 is a lot like influenza in some ways and different in others. So similar to flu, some people are at higher risk of complications, individuals over 60 years and those with underlying medical conditions. And that is what I really want you to remember, is that these people are at the highest risk and we need to make sure that anyone in this high-risk category is doing everything they can to protect themselves. Unlike influenza, children tend to have much milder illness than adults and that's actually been proven now with multiple studies showing that far fewer children have severe disease and we just simply aren't seeing them hospitalized hardly at all and they very rarely have critical disease. In fact, there's known to be only one death in the entire world among somebody under 18. So unlike influenza, there is no treatment or vaccine and that limits our options to what we can do to protect ourselves but we still have tried in true ways. And according to the World Health Organization, adults are really the spreaders of this disease. We know that kids can become infected and they can spread it but because of their milder symptoms, they're less likely to spread it to adults than the other way around. Next slide. Well, how does it spread? I hear all the time that there is concern for airborne spread. Airborne means something very specific in public health and COVID-19 spreads through droplets. That means, similar to colds or the flu, when someone coughs or sneezes, it produces tiny droplets and those droplets can travel about six feet. They can land on a surface and if you touch that surface and then touch your hand to your mouth or your nose, that's how the virus gets in your body. So that's why we're constantly talking about staying home when you're sick because if you are coughing and sneezing, or even if you're not and you're just talking and the little droplets of spit, they can actually travel a full six feet. So staying home when you're sick is number one. Number two is making sure we're wiping down those high-touch surfaces a couple of times a day so that people won't touch those surfaces. And then number three is, of course, not touching your mouth and nose because that's how the germs get in. Again, there's no evidence of airborne spread. This germ cannot travel across the room unless you're in very specific healthcare circumstances like getting a bronchoscopy or giving CPR. That is the only time when there is any evidence of airborne spread. Next slide. Well, how contagious is it? I've been using this diagram to visualize something that we use in public health. It's called the R knot but it's really a measure of how infectious a particular virus or organism is. And the two that I circled are the two I want you to focus on. COVID-19 has an infectiousness factor of between two and three typically. So for every person who's infected, two to three people will get infected from that person. When we look at seasonal flu, it varies from year to year but that number is usually between one and two. In order to stop a disease from spreading, we need to get that number down below one. This is definitely more infectious than influenza and that is why we can't necessarily use all the same modeling for flu that we're using for COVID-19. And in some ways, we treat it the same but in other ways, it's different. Next slide, please. How severe is it? China had over 80,000 cases. 81% of them had mild disease and then a paper that came out later, just looking at children, showed that 94% of children diagnosed had mild disease. Now remember, these are people who are diagnosed with a test and not people who'd never got a test and we know that just like here, there was a shortage of testing in China. So these are vast overestimates of severe disease. What they showed is that there was between 1.4 and 2.3% mortality among those who were diagnosed. So that's simply taking the number who died over the total number of people diagnosed with a lab-confirmed case and the mortality. Again, that is a vast overestimate and that has been borne out in multiple studies among experts. The World Health Organization calculated a crude mortality, again, that's just the number who died over the total number who were diagnosed, between 3% to 4%. And then when world experts got together and included all of the cases who weren't diagnosed, they believe the actual mortality is less than 1%. Seasonal flu mortality is also less than 1% but it's at the bottom there at 0.1% to 0.2%. So we do think the mortality of this virus is slightly higher than flu but it is not 10 times higher as you may have heard in the media. That is not accurate. So this is similar to a very severe influenza. And I want people to understand, I think when I say that, people think, "Oh, she's downplaying it." I have a lot of respect for influenza and I worry every year when it comes around. So when I say it's similar to severe influenza, that's concerning to me but what it's not is something like SARS or MERS, which has a much higher mortality rate. Next slide. So how do we prevent it? Just like the flu, we cover coughs and sneezes, wash our hands, and use hand sanitizer. Hand sanitizer is very effective unless you actually have visible soiling on your hand. And I don't want to get gross here but if you sneeze in your hand and you can see stuff left behind, you need soap and water. Hand sanitizer isn't going to cut it. If you don't see anything on your hands, hand sanitizer works really well. Avoid touching your face, particularly your mouth or your nose and we talked about how that's how you get the germs in. So you can touch a surface that's contaminated and not get sick as long as you don't touch your face. So you've got two barriers there. And then staying home when you're sick is the most important thing. And I will tell you that I had the tiniest tickle in my throat and I am home. I am not going to work. I'm working from home because we can't afford to take any chances. So social distancing, we're going to talk more about later. But I wanted to cover this important thing. There's a lot of questions about should I wear a mask? And everyone in public health agrees, "No, if you're healthy, you should not wear a mask." The only people who should be wearing masks are people who are sick and have to be out and about. If you have to buy groceries or have to go to a doctor's appointment and you're having symptoms, make sure you wear a mask. Otherwise, please save the mask for our healthcare workers who are taking care of our sickest patients and need to protect themselves and maintain our healthcare system. Next slide. So now I'm going to talk about COVID-19 in the U.S. These are yesterday's numbers. I apologize, I couldn't get them updated for today but there's over 15,000 cases and 201 deaths. And as we all know, every death affects us and it's just really important that we're all doing everything that we can to minimize the consequences, particularly for those who have high risk. This next slide is a picture of an Epi curve and this is the bread and butter of public health. And I wanted to show it, even though it's a couple of days old, I wanted to show it because you hear the phrase "flatten the curve" a lot. When we have a curve, we always have time on that horizontal axis and we have the number of cases on that vertical axis. And we map the number of cases that we see every day. And when we talk about flattening the curve, it means decreasing the total peak of that curve so that we don't get as many cases over time and that maybe we decrease the duration of it. But what I can tell you is it will not stop the outbreak. The measures that we have available to us now are not going to stop it. We can just decrease the impact until we get a vaccine. That is the only thing that has ever been shown to actually stop an outbreak unless, in a disease with these characteristics, unless we get lucky and there's some seasonality to this. Next slide. So this is what COVID-19 in Arizona looks like today. We have 234 cases confirmed and tragically, we have two deaths, both of which have been in Maricopa County. In the county, we have 139 cases, all of which are adults, and this number is almost doubling daily. We've had 25 cases hospitalized, so that's just under 1 in 5 hospitalized, and a total of seven individuals are 5% that are critically ill. And again, 1% have died in Maricopa County. So I just want to highlight again, there are not 139 cases in the county. There are many, 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 many more. We are not, we don't have the capacity to test, which we'll talk about more, so you should assume that there are many more cases for every single one that we confirm in a laboratory setting. But you should also know that it's the most severe cases that are getting tested. So these numbers represent the most severe cases overall and they're going to overestimate the severity of the illness here in Maricopa County. Next slide. So I just want to clarify, these two terms, I think they're used interchangeably in the community but in public health, they mean something very different. Isolation is keeping people with fever or respiratory symptoms, any symptoms, home and away from others and it is absolutely critical to decrease the spread of this illness. I just can't emphasize that enough. It's the core. Quarantine is when we keep those who are exposed to an infected person but don't have any symptoms, home and away from others. Public health recommends quarantining of household members of a confirmed case and somebody who never got tested at all. So because testing is limited, we have to assume that every cold, every respiratory illness that anyone has is COVID-19 until proven otherwise. And therefore, if you've got someone in your household that either has been diagnosed with COVID-19 or just has a cold, we're asking all of the household members to stay home for 14 days. We know that's a lot but that is the fundamental way we're going to reduce the spread of this disease. And there's only one exception to that and that's healthcare workers. We need our healthcare workers to be working and taking care of the people who are diagnosed and in the hospital. So what we're asking all of the healthcare system to do is monitor their healthcare workers daily for fever and symptoms and allow them to work until they become symptomatic at which point they have to keep them home. Next slide. So what is our public health strategy overall? It's absolutely critical to maintain everything on this slide for the long haul. And I don't mean to beat this to death but isolation of all sick individuals regardless of whether or not they have been diagnosed with COVID-19 is just the fundamental basis for everything we do. We investigate cases for close contacts. As we get further along and there's more cases, we might not be able to do as close of an investigation and we're actually relying on cases to let their contacts know that they've been exposed. We quarantine household contacts, which I talked about. We notify other close contacts so they can watch for fever and symptoms and stay home immediately if they develop them. And then we need high-risk individuals, so those greater than 60 or with chronic medical conditions, to avoid sick people at all costs and avoid groups over 10. We're monitoring all healthcare workers daily for fever and symptoms and we are doing some social distancing right now. Next slide, please. So what is social distancing exactly? It's what we call non-pharmaceutical intervention. So we don't have a vaccine and we don't have treatment so we have to rely on things that have nothing to do with treatment or drugs. What it means is avoiding unnecessary travel, making sure that only essential visitors are going to the hospitals and long-term care facilities where our most vulnerable people are, canceling non-essential mass gatherings, avoiding groups greater than 10, teleworking when possible, and I put "cancel schools?" question mark because the literature is very clear that canceling schools doesn't have any impact on the Epi curve or on spreading of disease. We understand why the governor elected to do this, just to create some uniformity across the state, but it doesn't actually have support in the literature as far as affecting the outbreak. Closing bars and dine-in restaurants is a slightly more extreme measure of social distancing and then, of course, sheltering in place is the most extreme thing that we can do. Next slide, please. So this is a marathon, not a sprint. It's going to take us a full year to get a vaccine and we need to maintain the minimum social distancing strategies until we get that vaccine, which is at least a year away. So we've got to recommend things that people can actually maintain. Other strategies like teleworking, canceling mass gatherings, and limiting dining in should be added during periods of high spread. We're in moderate spread right now and it's not unreasonable that we have those things in place. Sheltering at home is effective but it's only effective if you keep it going until we get a vaccine, which is an entire year. So when we recommend sheltering in place is based on our healthcare capacity. That is our primary trigger in Maricopa County. Next slide, please. Why not shut everything down now? There's a lot of talk about this and it's something that is really important that I know that we think about every day. We're constantly reading the literature. There are a lot of models out there and I want you to understand what models are. They have a lot of assumptions in them and they put in a lot of assumptions about the disease and disease transmission. But what they don't include is other societal homes that is caused from shutting everything down. So the published science from other countries says that if we shut it down too early, that the disease will just come right back afterwards. And we know that the disease will be reintroduced when social distancing is relaxed and spread will begin again. So there's a critical time when you can implement maximal social distancing and it will actually stop the outbreak. And that requires enough of the population to already be immune from having the disease so that it won't continue to spread. And that allows you to do it for a short time so it doesn't severely impact the economy. Remember, most people will get a cold or a mild illness and if you have people not being able to eat, increased domestic violence, increased child abuse, and all those other things to avoid young, healthy people from getting a cold, you can actually do more harm than good. And so what we recommend is doing short periods of maximal social distancing to reduce stress on the healthcare system, like when our ICUs are full. And I want to let you know that we are at such low capacity in our healthcare systems right now, we are not even close to where we normally are during flu season and that's something we check in on every day. Next slide, please. Well, what if I get sick? If you test positive for COVID-19, we ask you to stay home for seven days from the positive test or 72 hours after you're symptom-free, whichever is longer. And we ask you to stay away from others in your household. Stay in one room, have them put food by your door, and you can open the door and take the food away. If someone in the family has a mask, they can, of course, come in and take the food in with you as long as they're wearing a mask. If you go out and intermix with the rest of the people in the household, it's important that you, the sick person, wear the mask. If you have a fever or cold symptoms, please stay home for 72 hours until you're symptom-free. Sorry, I just got, oh, there we go. Stay away from others in the household also. So household members are going to be asked to quarantine at home for 14 full days and that's from the last day they were exposed. Other close contacts are allowed to go to work but we ask that they monitor for symptoms and stay home immediately if they're sick. Next slide. That quarantine exception again is healthcare workers in EMS. We ask them to continue to work, monitor for symptoms, and follow the Maricopa County Public Health guidance. And every single healthcare system and emergency management, I'm sorry, and EMS or FIRE should have a system in place for monitoring their staff daily, not just exposed staff but every single one because we have to assume everyone's been exposed to some COVID-19. Next slide. So public health and privacy. I want everyone to understand that public health is automatically informed of positive COVID-19 tests. If you're just sick and you don't have a test, we won't know about it. But if you have a positive test, we are informed and we will contact you and ask you to inform your close contacts. We're not going to share who you are or where you live or any other information that could be used to identify you. Not only is this a legal obligation... Oh, sorry, I can hear some feedback. Could everyone put their phones on mute, please? Thank you. So this is not only a legal obligation but we also don't want to put people who test positive at risk of being harassed. And that's really important because we've had individuals with other diseases actually get death threats. So when the media asks us, "Well, what part of town do they live in?" and all these other questions and you think, "Well, we have a right to know," I really want people to understand that if this were your family member, your child, or your parent, you would want their privacy protected and you wouldn't want people to be able to piece together different information about them to find out where they live or where they worked. And that's why we hold privacy to the highest level. It's both legally an obligation and we do it to protect our citizens. Next slide. So why can't everyone get tested? And the answer is, there just isn't enough testing for everyone to get tested who wants it. The Arizona State Lab is testing hospitalized patients and those who are the most sick and those who are in high-risk settings. There's not enough personal protective equipment, which is gowns and gloves and masks, for community providers to collect specimens safely and we don't want them to put themselves at risk. And most importantly, there's not enough nasal swabs in the medium that you put the swabs in to test. So what's happening is there's a lot of providers who are hesitant to test C-patients and test them in the community and if you can't get the materials to collect the specimen, you simply can't get the test. So that is what is limiting our testing. There's lots of commercial labs that will perform it but it's those supplies that are limiting people's ability to get testing with mild to moderate illness. Next slide, please. So drive-through testing. Maricopa County Public Health does not have the resources to stand-up drive-through testing. If we could, we would but there's just a few hundred of us and there's 4 million people in the county so it just wouldn't be possible. The feds, our federal colleagues have mobile testing units and I know that they're looking into bringing some out here but I have not heard that that's been successful yet. We definitely have healthcare systems that are ready to stand up and ready to go but they're waiting on having enough testing supplies to meet the demand and we're hoping that will alleviate some of this inability to get testing. We've raised the request to get enough supplies and enough personal protective equipment to the highest levels, including all of our elected officials and the FDA, and we are doing everything we can to get those. And I just want to address that a lot of you heard that someone in the federal government just went online and ordered swabs. And I appreciate that they were able to do that. My guess is that they were able to get the type of swabs that are readily available with a wooden handle made of cotton. Those are easy to get but you can't use them for testing. So we constantly go on and try to order these swabs and they are all back orders for weeks at a time. Next slide, please. So why can't we get the supplies? There's a big supply chain disruption. What I've learned recently is that these swabs are manufactured in Italy. That's a huge issue because they're on complete lockdown so they're not able to put out the products that they used to. The most common... The most common requests are N95 respirators, surgical masks, isolation gowns, gloves, and eye shields. We don't maintain a local cache of these items. We have a very limited supply, and we've been able to supply EMS and FIRE so that when there's an emergency, they can protect themselves. Next slide, please. Well, what about the Strategic National Stockpile? We call it the SNS. The SNS is coming this week. The state already received it, and it's being distributed to the county today and tomorrow. Unfortunately, we know that the supply will not come even close to meeting the demand. We think we're going to get about 36,000 N95 respirators, and the request from the field is several million respirators. So our expectation far exceeds the reality of what we're going to get, and we are going to...next slide, please. We are going to prioritize the healthcare workers who see the sickest patients and those who are at the highest risk of spread. And we're urging outpatient providers to use telemedicine when they can and ask patients at lower risk with mild to moderate illness to do self-care at home, and then seek further care if their fever doesn't go away, or they develop shortness of breath, or they start to get worse. Next slide, please. So we have some really vulnerable populations that we want to make sure you know that we're working with every day. Those in our long-term care facilities, mostly over 60. We're actually doing active surveillance among long-term care facilities to learn early when there's an outbreak so we can help them manage it. Additionally, those experiencing homelessness or unstable housing are very vulnerable to this, because they don't have a place to isolate if they get sick. So we're working closely with the City of Phoenix and our county colleagues to find alternate locations for housing and wraparound services to separate those who are sick from others, separating those who are at high risk from others so they're not in crowded settings. So if one person gets ill, they won't all get infected. And also to maximize hygiene facilities, like hand-washing stations, and to decrease crowding so we can maximize social distancing in those populations. Next slide, please. So what can the city do? We ask you to make sure employee sick policies allow for sick people to stay home, allow teleworking wherever possible, and increase cleaning of those high-touch surfaces that people can accidentally touch. And please remember, it is your individual responsibility not to put your hands in your mouth or your nose. It's harder than it sounds, but we have to learn to do it. Please support public health with local community efforts, supporting services for individuals with homelessness, wraparound services, like bringing them food, and helping people who are in isolation get their needs met. And lastly, the biggest thing you can do to help us is to share accurate public health information. There's a lot of misinformation, wrong information, out there in the media, and it's really important that you're listening to public health. And also, listen to folks at the local level. You all work for the local government. You know that locals know what's happening locally. Try to focus on what people are telling us in this area, rather than what people are doing in other states and at the federal level, because we know best what our current situation is here. Next slide. I'll take any questions that you have, and this is our public hotline if you require any information, and it is actually manned by human beings. All right, I'll take time for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Sunnenshine. And it turns out the CDC just released updated numbers, and it looks like, unfortunately, deaths in our country have doubled just since you put the PowerPoint deck together, so...
Mm-hmm.
Councilmember questions?
Mayor.
Yes, Dr. Sunnenshine. What? Oh, okay. Deborah Stark, I'm sorry, I couldn't tell the voices apart. We'll go with Dr. Stark, and then we'll go with Councilmember Garcia. We'll go with Deborah Stark, and then Councilmember Garcia. Councilwoman Stark.
Mayor, thank you. I've had the opportunity to meet the doctor. I must say, we're very, very lucky to have her. She's doing wonderful work. My question has to do with surgical masks. I've seen on social media, a number of groups are sewing masks to try to support our healthcare system. Is this a good idea? Do you have suggestions on what we would do with regards to sewing these masks? Is there any material we should be using? That's my question.
It's a great question, and I'm definitely not an expert on self-manufacture of personal protective equipment. What I can say is that there are good recommendations out there for extending the life of the personal protective equipment we have, so not, you know, using a different mask every single time we see a patient. It has its own concerns with it. As someone who is trained in infection control, it makes me cringe, but if you're careful about not touching the outside of the mask, you can take that mask off and then put it back on to the next patient. So I think conserving the masks that are manufactured is the most important thing we can do, and that's one of the reasons why, even though I don't support shutting everything down, I'm very much in support of shutting down elective surgeries, because that uses a lot of masks and other personal protective equipment that we can use to take care of patients who need it acutely. So conserving is number one. Number two is, we have someone in the county designated to take donations of surgical masks from dentists, most of which who are closed down. And the reason why dentists are closed down is because the majority of their work is elective, and they typically wear surgical masks, but most of their procedures generate aerosols. So in order to practice safely, a dentist needs to be wearing an N95 respirator. The American Dental Association has actually asked them to cancel their practices. So they have quite a few surgical masks that we are now taking and collecting and distributing. So the next thing is using what we have available. As far as making our own, I will say that a certain healthcare facility is making their own eye shields, which is probably much easier to do with a rubber band and a piece of plastic. But a mask, I would be concerned, because you need to make sure that the pore size is the right amount to keep secretions in. So I can look into that, but I'd have to get back to you on the specifics.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, doctor. That was really helpful. I had a question on the vaccine. If you could expand a little bit. You said it's a year away, but even when it comes, can you explain a little bit about how vaccine works? And also, when you're talking about literature, what are you referring to?
So there's a lot...let me start with the vaccine first. As soon as a new strain of any organism is identified, in this case, China identified it, and they posted the sequence to the internet, basically. And that is why so many different labs and facilities are able to produce a test so quickly. Well, CDC takes that strain and immediately starts working on a vaccine before they ever even know that there's going to be an outbreak. A lot of people don't realize that we're constantly starting the development of vaccines because we don't know where things are going to go. So from listening to the Vice President and particularly Dr. Anthony Fauci, you hear that this vaccine is probably being manufactured than any other vaccine in the history of time, so it's moved quite quickly. But that being said, they still have to make it, and then it has to go through three sets of trials. The first, to make sure that it's safe for humans; the second, to make sure that it's effective; and the third, to figure out exactly what dose and in what populations it stays and effective. And so that typically takes a year. Once they manufacture it, they're not going to have enough for every single person in the population. So Arizona has a system in place where we'll have a vaccine...I forget what the official name of it is, but it's basically a vaccine recommendation committee. The federal government will assemble a team of experts, they'll make recommendations to the state, then the state will do the same and make recommendations to the county. And if I had to guess, what they will do likely is prioritize individuals at the highest risk first, because they're a very distinct population, and we want to make sure that we're protecting those who are most likely to be hospitalized or even die from the disease. And then your second question...I'm so sorry, could you remind me?
Yeah, and I'll put another...when you refer to literature, what do you mean? And then also, if you can expand on the healthcare capacity triggering the sheltering. How do those numbers come in, and how do you keep track of that, or where is that at? You said it was even lower than it was with the flu? Can you expand on that as well?
So when we talk about the literature, there's really...there's two types of literature out there, and I think what a lot of people are focusing on right now is modeling. And modeling is very useful for helping to make decisions, but it's generally not accurate, because in order to model, you have to put in a lot of assumptions about the disease that we don't yet know. You also put in a lot of assumptions about the population that may not apply to the entire country equally. And there's a lot of different models out there with very different results, and what I can tell you is, they're assuming that this disease is just like influenza, which it's really not. It spreads more quickly, but in all likelihood, there's...we think that there's a lot of mild disease out there that isn't similar to the flu. And most importantly, influenza spreads predominantly among children and goes from children to adults. And we know every year that when we see our flu numbers rise, they rise in the school populations, elementary schools particularly, about two weeks before everyone else. So they are what pushes the spread. So you can't use the same models for influenza that you do for coronavirus, because it's really spread in different ways than the flu is. Not different ways as in it's the same type of spread, but it's different populations that spread it. And so I want to caution folks about looking at the models. I also want to caution folks about assuming that what they're doing in California or Washington is what's right for Arizona. Washington, California, and New York are in a very different situation. They've already exceeded their healthcare capacity in many ways, and they've already exceeded their PPE capacity. It's very important that if you implement those strict measures, that you have an exit strategy. And what I don't think is feasible is to have everyone sheltered in place for the next year. So you have to implement it at the right time so that you have an exit strategy. So the other type of science that's out there is the actual data of what we're seeing in countries. And the China data is definitely the best data that we have, but actually, the data from South Korea is really helpful, because they've done more testing than any other country, and those are probably the best estimates of what we think the actual mortality of this illness is, which is likely to be far less than 1%. What we know is that you can't rely on just those who test positive. The good news is, public health deals with this all the time. We have lots of diseases that we can't test everyone, particularly flu. So we know how to estimate how many people are out there that haven't been tested based on the people that we are testing. And that's different than modeling. That's actually using the numbers we have to estimate what we're missing. And that...those numbers, those estimates are what we use to base our triggers on for when we need to go to more extreme measures. So a lot of people think, oh, if you're not testing, how do you know what's happening? And the answer is, we do this all the time in public health, and we have lots of other measures, including something called influenza-like illness surveillance, that we can track. And that tells us how many people are sick, but not necessarily diagnosed.
So I had another question. So when it comes to our first responders, what are some...just given the lack of masks and the lack of sanitizers, what are some concrete steps that our first responders can actually take to make sure that they also keep safe?
Great question. So we've been working with our EMS partners, and one of the things that we've instituted, particularly at 911, is they're automatically being asked, the callers being asked, does this person have respiratory symptoms, or does any...I think they're asking about the household, but particularly, does this person have any symptoms of COVID-19? So that way, the EMS providers who are being dispatched can have PPE available and ready ahead of time. Now, if there's a situation where you don't have that information as an EMS provider, the best thing you can do, unless it's an absolute emergency, so obviously, if somebody is having a heart attack, or if somebody is not breathing, you just need to put your PPE on and go in and take care of them. But if somebody is in a non-emergent situation, stand six feet back from them and say, are you having any cough, shortness of breath, sore throat, or other respiratory symptoms? And if they say, no, I just fell and I hurt my hip, then you don't need to use unnecessary gowns, gloves, and masks. But just doing that from six feet away will protect the healthcare worker and avoid using that limited personal protective equipment that we have. Next question?
Are there councilmember questions?
I have a question. So unfortunately, we lost a worker to COVID-19, and that person was in a building. I understand that 14 days ago, they had been placed or was in the hospital, but as you could tell me, Dr. Sunnenshine, because you have a lot of pressure on you, and we're all following you, and a lot of pressure. So my question is, 14 days ago, this person entered the hospital. However, we don't know how long this person had COVID-19 or the coronavirus and was at work. So what do we do? I mean, because those employees, at a certain point, were at risk. One of those employees could be carrying it, and we don't know. So what is your recommendation in moving forward? Because my recommendation would be to shut down the building, sanitize the building, and have those employees working at home, but I would like your advice.
Thank you, and I'm glad you brought that up. And I just want to say how sorry I am that you all lost one of your own, and it's just...this is tragic, and it's one of the reasons why I keep emphasizing that people who are over 60 with chronic medical conditions, they need to be teleworking right now. They need to be staying home as much as possible, and we know not everyone can do that, but as much as possible, they need to. And I want to answer your question about what to do now, but I really want to address some false information that's been going on in the media this weekend, and I think it's important for your community and everyone in the City of Phoenix to know this. So this individual did not go to the hospital. This individual was found deceased in the home. And it's important for people to know that when people are found deceased in the home, we have a system in place with the Maricopa County Medical Examiner, that if there's any suspicion that COVID-19 could be involved, we test those individuals right away. So if there's someone found in the home, they're tested literally at that moment when they're identified, if they meet the criteria. And then that test is sent to a commercial laboratory, which it was sent immediately. Took three days to come back, and then we were notified of that test result on Friday afternoon. We immediately called the next of kin, which is the family, and we will always call the family first. The most horrible thing in the world is to find out about the cause of the death of your loved one from colleagues of them or on the TV, rather than being the first one to know. So we will always notify the family first, and literally while we were on the phone with the family, we held a meeting with the City of Phoenix. So I want you to know that you are notified within hours of this individual being identified as a case. So I understand that the media doesn't understand how we do things in public health, and they don't understand that testing takes time, but that notification occurred as seamlessly as it possibly could. So what are we telling those employees? First of all, we had long conversations with the particular supervisor. We identified which meetings that individual was in and which people were considered close contacts. So the people at highest risk, whenever we have someone diagnosed, are the people in the households. That's one of the reasons we call them first, is we make sure that they're going to stay home and away from others for 14 days if they haven't developed symptoms. And if they have, then we make sure that they stay away from others until 72 hours after their symptoms resolve and/or seven days after their positive test. So after those household contacts, the next people at highest risk are those who've spent more than 10 minutes face-to-face with somebody who had the illness. And we identified each one of those people, and the City of Phoenix just went above and beyond and actually elected to call... beyond and actually elected to call each of them individually to inform them that there was some contact. We also, we stayed up late Friday night writing a letter and made sure that everyone got that letter. And what we're asking those folks to do is to monitor daily for fever and symptoms, and the moment they get those symptoms, they need to stay home and away from others. So you talked about closing the building and sanitizing it. You don't need to sanitize anything. Normal household cleaners are, disinfectants are highly effective at getting rid of the virus. So what we talked about was what they were cleaning with, what areas they were cleaning, and they confirmed that they had already put intensive cleaning into place and wiped down all of those surfaces. And that is enough to get rid of the virus in the environment. Whenever you read those studies about how long the virus can stay in the environment, that is if you haven't applied a disinfectant on them. We're lucky that this virus is susceptible to normal household cleaners. So that is why I'm not recommending shutting down the building, and we're asking all those employees to monitor for symptoms, to make sure they stay home when they're sick. And I know City of Phoenix has a, an excellent leave policy so that if anyone even has the slightest symptom, they're allowing them to stay home.
Dr. Sunshine, could you talk about the risk of disease transmission prior to the onset of symptoms and the concern that waiting until symptoms show up is too late to stop community transmission?
Yeah, that's another great question. And I actually, there's so many questions about this from healthcare providers, but I've sent a letter out to every healthcare provider in Maricopa County. And, and the truth is, there is some spread from people who don't show any symptoms. We know that to be true. We know that that's true for influenza, and we know that that's true for lots of other respiratory viruses. So we know it exists. We also know that it's not the main way that the virus spreads because it's transmitted on those droplets when you cough or sneeze, right? So generally speaking, and I, I don't want to get gross, but I, I need you to visualize, the more droplets that are being expelled during a cough or a sneeze, the more virus you're going to have on those droplets, and the further those, that virus is going to spread. So you can absolutely spread far more virus when somebody is symptomatic than when they're not. So how does it spread when they don't have symptoms? That person would have to touch their mouth or their nose and then touch a surface, and then that surface would have to not be cleaned, which we're doing everything we can to have people cleaning high-touch surfaces regularly. And then someone else would have to come and touch that high-touch surface, and then before washing their hands or sanitizing them, would have to touch their mouth and their nose. That is how asymptomatic spread occurs. There is a possibility that if somebody sort of spits a little bit when they talk, that it could be spread that way, but again, there's just a lot less chance of it spreading when they're asymptomatic or when they have no symptoms than when they have active symptoms. And so what I tell people is, we all know it's there, we acknowledge it. That's all the more reason why we have to focus on what we can control, which is touching our mouth and nose and washing our hands, and recognize that if, if every single person who is exposed to a COVID-19 case, the, the way that we would have to manage asymptomatic spread would be to have every single person in Maricopa County shelter in place until there was a vaccine. And if we did that, it would truly shut society down. So what we're asking is that we focus on those who are symptomatic, which we know will decrease the spread most of all, and then we ask those who are at highest risk to shelter in place so that the people who do get infected will have mild disease that will build up the immunity in the population. We're not trying to get anyone infected, but those are the people who will have mild disease, and that will likely decrease the spread the best without having those severe consequences among high-risk people.
When you look in Maricopa County, we have some communities in particular that have pretty significant concentrations of older adults, much higher than some of the communities that have been, had the worst impacts. Is there anything you're thinking about for those communities? Are there lessons learned or impacts or modeling assumptions that, that you are considering?
Um, you know, no modeling assumptions, no, just, just that those communities with more high-risk populations, long-term care facilities, we learned from Washington that that is the worst-case scenario. So if I were a long-term care facility and I was seeing a lot of respiratory illness, what I would do is I would minimize group dining. I might have people dine in shifts, I might have them dine in their rooms. Again, you know, you can't prevent everyone from socializing because socializing is absolutely a fundamental human need. So we've got to balance the risks and the benefits. But those areas, there's whole communities in Maricopa County that are, you know, restricted to individuals over 50. This is not the time to have bingo. This is the time to play cards with a couple of healthy friends, go golfing, walking outside, really having people do active activities outdoors is the safest possible thing and keep everything to small groups. And that, I just can't emphasize that enough for people over 60 with chronic medical conditions. Mayor? Mayor?
Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you. Doctor, you mentioned being outdoors. I got a, a text from one of my constituents last week. He was driving by a park and saw a cluster of children playing together on playground equipment. What about that kind of issue? Should we be cautioning, or should we even be talking about closing down playground equipment? Do you have any thoughts on that? Yeah, I've been asked that question a lot. Because of the reasons I just mentioned, and because we're a very, we have very dry climate, droplets just don't survive very long. They dry up very quickly in our climate. So being outside is the safest place to be during, you know, an outbreak of a disease that's spread through droplets. So what we don't want people to do is have to sit still in their home for, you know, months and months and months. We want people to go outside. We want people to stay six feet away from each other. I know my own parents went out to take a hike, and the trailhead was so crowded, they turned around and came home. They're over 60, by the way, and I was proud of them. So if you, if you go to a park and you can't stay six feet away from others, or if you go to a trailhead, find another trailhead. But, but it's, it's good for people to be outside, and it's good for them to stay active, and that's the only way we're going to get through this for the long haul. Regarding children, this disease just isn't severely affecting children. We've already closed down schools, and I think if you keep children cooped up inside for long periods of time, again, probably doing more harm than good, and I would not close playgrounds either. Would I, would I go out there and try and disinfect the playground equipment once or twice a day, if that's possible? Absolutely. Would I make sure that kids have hand sanitizer and are washing their hands? And would I teach them not to touch their mouth and their nose? Definitely, but I wouldn't close playgrounds.
Councilwoman Noakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Doctor, thank you so much for all this information. One of the things here in the City of Phoenix, we're trying to increase cleanliness and sanitizing everything that we have, all of our different facilities, from our police officers, firefighters, to our own housing departments and stuff like that. But one of the concerns I have is that our police officers, firefighters, and even the bus drivers and some other employees like parks and rec, individuals are out there in the community on a daily basis. And what can we do as a city to make sure, especially, let's say, the buses, right? We're in a confined area where you have over 40 people in a bus, and you have one bus driver that has people that are coughing and sneezing around that individual. What can we do better as a City of Phoenix to, to make sure those type of confined areas, which is a bus, the light rail, and those other areas that people need to use for transportation? Some of these individuals, that's their only means of transportation, and they're actually the individuals that are cleaning our offices and cleaning the hospitals and cleaning other facilities that are needed to make sure that our, our men and women aren't getting, that they're basically, that they're sanitized and that they're clean and that the virus doesn't pass on. So what would be your suggestion on that with the buses and light rail?
Right, so you just raised some really important points. Buses and light rail, I think, are hands down the hardest one because, as you mentioned, this is often people's only means of transportation. And you want to keep the people who are healthy, healthy, who are in those enclosed spaces. So I, I think this is really tricky, and I don't, I don't want to act like I know the answer. There's a, there's a couple of possibilities. Number one, and the easiest one to do, is to try to wipe down all of those, the seats and the surfaces, and particularly the handrails and the things, you know, the thing, whatever you manipulate in order to get the bus driver to stop. Those things need to be wiped down as often as possible. I think the other feasible thing to do would be to have a giant pump of hand sanitizer so that when people got on the bus, actually have them use the hand sanitizer. I think that one's feasible. What gets harder is if someone comes on and is coughing and sneezing, you know, and they might have allergies, they might be sick, you don't know. That's a difficult situation. I don't know that we can ask them to get off the bus. I don't, I don't know if it's feasible to keep them six feet away from everyone. The one thing that you might consider is giving the bus driver access to just a couple of surgical masks, which by the way, are very difficult to keep around. Everyone is, is stealing them. And, and maybe they could offer that person a mask so that they didn't infect others, but I just don't know about that, and I'm open to any suggestions that you all have.
And, Doctor, this is Councilwoman Noakowski again. And how about our employees that are basically the bus drivers and that are conducting the, the light rail, that are, that's a part of their daily operations and the necessity for us to provide those types of services? How can we make sure that they're, they're protected on a daily basis?
So again, it's doing everything we can do to keep people with respiratory symptoms off of the transportation and keeping the sick people, if they can wear a mask and use hand sanitizer, that's ideal. There's enough community spread of this illness that all of us need to assume that we're being exposed at some point in our day. And that's definitely true for anyone who interacts with members of the public because we know that people can, you know, have hardly any symptoms at all and are going to be out and about. So that being said, I would say if there is a way for bus drivers who have chronic medical conditions or who are over 60, if there's a way to give them time off, that, that would be preferable. I, I don't know if that's possible, but in general, it's really going to be just keeping anybody with symptoms more than six feet away from them, and maybe even having a rule, if you're coughing or sneezing, they have to sit, you know, in a certain part of the bus and away from others. I, I'm not a policy, a city policy person, so I can kind of tell you what the science is, but I don't know what's appropriate in terms of the situation.
Thank you, Doctor. One more question. This is Councilman Noakowski again. We're getting calls from individuals that are saying that, residents for the City of Phoenix, that are saying they're calling their doctors with the symptoms and all that, and they're not taking individuals seriously and that they want to get tested. So one of the things, can they use this public hotline if their own doctors aren't taking them serious that they can call for a second opinion or so?
So unfortunately, we've taken more than 10,000 calls from the public and providers just, just in the last week, I think. And 90% of those calls are people who are frustrated because they have symptoms and they want to get tested. And I have to tell you, I understand how anxious it is that you could be when you're experiencing symptoms and we know there's this disease out here. What I can tell you is that there is nothing that public health can do to get individuals with mild to moderate illness tested. If they're unable to get their provider to test them, there's nothing we can do for them. We're hoping that this drive-through testing, when we have enough supplies, will help alleviate some of that. But that commercial testing is the only way that they're going to have to get tested. The state lab will only test people who are severely ill, typically those who are hospitalized. So they can call the public hotline and get information, but we can't help them get tested because we don't have access ourselves.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
So given the information that we, that we got from the doctor, I've, I've gotten a couple of phone calls in the last few days, and when it comes to our parks. So I just got a lot of peace of mind with what she said about the parks and making sure that people are out, but then at the same time, are there special instructions that we can put in our parks in terms of recommendations of how many people can actually be at the park? What are, what is the safest way to use the park right now without saying that we're restricting everyone and anyone to come into the park? Just because I think as this starts to get, as the spread continues to get bigger, I think we're going to have a lot more concern. Constituents that will call and say, hey, listen, there's a bunch of people in the park, and I'm sure we're not going to have enough park rangers to get out there and get to every single park. So is, is it possible to put, you know, maybe, you know, specific instructions or instructions that we would like people to follow as they're coming into the park that, that we want them to be aware of?
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. Oh, sorry. I think that's a great idea. I would consider signage that says, you know, please respect the other, the other people in the parks. If you have symptoms of a cough, cold, or sore throat, please do not, you know, do not stay in the parks. Healthy people are welcome to be in the parks, but please stay six feet apart. And because I don't think most people know what six feet is, I would almost put a line somehow on the signs or say, this is, this is six feet apart, and, and give people an idea of how far they need to distance themselves on the trails and in the parks, and really ask people to respect those boundaries around other people so that you can prevent the spread. And then I would encourage people to carry their own hand sanitizer so that, you know, we don't have as many, as many germs spreading in the parks.
Councilmember Garcia.
Well, Doctor, I had some questions about what's happening for the folks that are in the jails or in the prison system, and also thoughts on our booking processes and all those sorts of things.
Yeah, so we, we just had a call with Correctional Health this morning, and we've been talking to them almost daily. It's, it's challenging because there's a lot of people packed into a very small space, but what we've come up with together is a system where anybody who develops any respiratory illness in the jails is being separated immediately from others. And then we're working out a system. We have one particular provider, I'll, I'll, I'll call them out. It's TGEN, who is willing to do a screening test to determine whether these individuals have evidence of COVID-19. Now, it's not a diagnostic test, it's a screening test, but if we know that people have COVID-19, then we can safely separate them from others, but put them with each other so that you don't need an individual isolation room. We call that cohorting. And you can't do that unless you know that that's the disease they have. So we would screen them, and then we would do a confirmatory test to make sure that they have COVID-19, and that's diagnostic. But if you screen negative, it's quite sensitive, and then you would be able to put them back in the population, and that would keep, that would keep COVID-19 from spreading in the jails. And so that's the process we're working on very hard with the jails, but it's obviously challenging because there's, you know, a limited amount of supplies even to collect the specimens.
Councilwoman Pastore.
Dr. Sunshine, you had mentioned something about social distancing, and you had said that we should be six feet apart, but also a 10-minute maximum exposure. I looked that up on the CDC, and I don't see that anywhere, and I'm wondering where that came from.
Okay, I, so forgive me if I didn't explain that clearly. So that's sort of two different things that you're talking about. So one is the definition of a close contact. And the CDC definition of a close contact to a case is when you are within six feet of them for more than 10 minutes, and that is a CDC definition that we use. And when I talk about staying more than six feet away from people, that's because that's how far droplets are known to spread when we cough or sneeze. So if someone's six feet away from you, or more, just over six feet away from you, and they cough or sneeze, you're not going to get hit by any of their droplets, and that's And that's why that's a nice, safe distance to keep between people. The more important thing, or as important, is, you know, not touching people unnecessarily. We know that transmit germs. This is a really bad time to shake hands. Come up with a little bow or some other way to greet people other than shaking hands. Not the best time to hug all your friends. Keep physical contact just among family members as best you can.
Thank you.
Mayor, may I ask a question?
Yes, Councilman Waring.
Thank you. Just a second, let me pull it up there again. So, Doctor, this is Jim Waring. I appreciate very much this presentation because you are an expert, but you've made this understandable for those of us, which is, I think, all of us who are not experts. There was one area where I just want to make sure before I ask my question that I had clarity. On the slide that says this is a marathon, not a sprint, it says we need to maintain the minimum social distancing strategies until we get a vaccine at least one year. So the way I interpreted that is that we're supposed to do the distancing, which I believe you just said was the six feet. So is that your recommendation to do that for a year?
So I do not have a crystal ball, and I cannot tell you for sure that this virus will be spreading in a year. The reason why we pick a year is because we know that's how long it'll take to get a vaccine. And if it does spread for that long, that is how long we'll have to maintain social distancing. I think we're all hoping that there is some, what we call seasonality, to this virus, like there are other coronaviruses where they tend to be worse in the winter and less in the summer, and that that will help minimize the spread. We're all hoping for that, but we just don't know. This is a strain that we don't know enough about. And what we've seen in these other countries is that it is so infectious that it will continue to spread until it can't spread anymore. So either enough people are infected that, you know, they can't get reinfected and it can't spread to anyone else, or we vaccinate. And so those are the two ways to build what we call herd immunity, which is the way that we can prevent diseases from spreading. And so we have to assume that we have to continue this for a full year unless we get lucky and it stops spreading for some other reason. But the science tells us that it will continue to spread until we have enough people who are immune that it can't spread anymore.
Well, I appreciate that.
And that's why we need to protect those people who are at high risk so that other people who are younger and healthier are the ones who build up the immunity, and we protect those who are more likely to have severe disease.
So to follow up, the reason I was asking that question, I appreciate the clarification. So obviously, the state and the city have closed facilities. Governor Ducey closed restaurants and gyms. And, for example, at the City of Phoenix, we closed libraries. Because obviously, you know, it's impossible, basically, to keep the spacing and have any of those three, and there are other examples too, but I just picked those three, to have those operations going and really keep six feet apart. I mean, maybe it's possible, I guess, in a gym, if it's huge, or a restaurant that's just sparsely attended, but, you know, that's a different problem for the restaurant. But the library, you know, it would be all but impossible to have the computer setups that we have to pass people in the stacks if you were checking out a book. It's just, you know, for us, that recommendation has certain real-world consequences. We're probably not going to be able to keep the library closed for a year. People use those facilities to contact the outside world. Not everybody has the internet, obviously, for example, so people using the computer uses the job, et cetera. We've already talked about the buses and the light rail. The buses particularly are used by people who really don't have other modes of transportation. So you can cancel, as frankly, my family has done, you can cancel a trip that you're taking that's not an emergency, you know, on a flight. But you're never going to be six feet away from someone unless it's a really empty flight. How are we going to get past this? Because you've also discussed about a reoccurring, and it's in one of your slides, and I had heard that as well. Nobody was happier to see that it was warm this morning than probably people in the medical community in Arizona. Normally, we wouldn't be rooting for hot weather, but this year, I find myself going, yay, it feels warmer. I wonder when it's going to be 110, can't wait, and dry. Because that may help us here in Arizona, but then if it's just going to come back in the fall after we reopen stuff, you know, how are we, you may not have the answers, but any guidance, like, when would you be opening up the library? Because that is a decision that we have made, and it's just, it's got real-world consequences, as I know you're aware, for large swaths of people. And, you know, we're trying to make sure that this is not something that we're doing that isn't absolutely 100% necessary, and it's hard to tell. And a year just seems unrealistic to me. So I'm open to any suggestions, I think we probably all are.
Thank you for that. I think you've just highlighted probably my biggest concern about closing all these What is our exit strategy? And the answer is, I don't know. I don't have an exit strategy. I wasn't consulted before they were closed. I don't know whether it was right or wrong. I know that I would not have recommended closing them, and I think that it's important to be realistic about what the true costs and harms to society are from closing things. And I think that if enough people lose their jobs and lose access to food and learning and their livelihoods, that you're doing more harm than you are by having a minor illness. I mean, I know people don't like to hear that, but that's, I do public health for a living, and health is not just the absence of disease, it's being able to maintain food and nutrition and sometimes exercise and some socialization. So that's why I don't love these models, because they only take disease into account and they don't take the other pieces. So what I would rather do, instead of focusing on, I would rather keep things open and find a way to make it less able to transmit disease. So if it's possible, better to have the libraries open and only let every other computer be in use at a time. Have signs, chairs need to be six feet apart. I know it's hard, but it's a lot harder to lose your livelihood than it is to have tables in a restaurant spaced six feet apart and have hand sanitizer at the door when people walk in. So again, it's minimizing harms on both sides. And I personally, and you're asking my opinion, and this is where the public health world is. I would try to minimize the spread and maximize distance, but keep facilities open because I do think that this is going to be a long haul.
Okay, I appreciate your candor in that answer. And, you know, obviously, you know, we're kind of on the fly on this. It's big decisions, not just at our level of government, but that's the one that we can participate in. That's an interesting answer and different than maybe I would have expected. The easy thing, of course, was that you needed to set it all down and keep it closed until it's not anymore. But you're absolutely right. I mean, my kids aren't in school right now. You know, that was a, it was kind of a controversial decision for our personal school. It was a, you know, they go to a private school. And so it was, that was something that definitely they were going to stay open, and then they didn't. And it's hard to know as a parent, or I'm sure as a school administrator, what's the right thing, because you don't get this year back, right? I mean, you know, you know.
Right.
You've got to learn things. You can't go on to fifth grade math or whatever if you haven't finished learning fourth grade math. It builds on itself, all the other classes and stuff, too. So now, are you going to set everybody behind? It's just, it's a hard decision. And just, you know, I just don't think the opening decision, you know, when we're going to reopen facilities, whether it's our libraries or the state doing it, you know, or businesses, that's also going to be a hard decision because some people will say you're jumping the gun too soon. And I just, if you could just kind of keep us posted what your guidance is and kind of what you think best practices are and so forth, we need the advice because, you know, we just don't really have the information. Your presentation was excellent in laying this out, but it's very tricky to know what's the best thing to do without, because we are, we know, we recognize, I think we all do, we're hurting citizens by closing these facilities. And, you know, but we don't want to reopen them too soon either. It's just, I don't belabor it anymore, but I appreciate your candor on that, and it did give us, I think, some things to think about. Thank you.
Thank you.
We know we have to get Dr. Sunshine back to her very important work, but Councilwoman Pastore.
Hold on, Sal, or Councilman DeCiccio. Dr. Sunshine, you mentioned the schools. And I'm just, I'm not really sure how the schools came about enclosing. Because I am aware that there was a statewide conference with DHS and the governor discussing the whole situation and highly encouraging not to close the schools. However, soon after that happened, a day later, schools were closing. And so, and I don't think schools are going to reopen. And I'm hearing that we probably stepped out way before than what we should, should have. I'm just trying to understand all these domino effects because it hits all of us at a different space and timing. It's really the timing.
Right. And I think that the timing is critical when it comes to these other social distancing measures, and I want to be very careful here. I respect the governor, and I understand that when these decisions are made, they have to take a lot of different things into account. I am very focused on public health. It's what I do for a living. It's what I'm trained to do. And I know there are politics, and I'm not a politician. So I just have to answer from a public health standpoint that because of the way this disease affects children so much less than adults, the literature, the science out there tells us that closing schools just doesn't have any effect on the spread of the disease. So that is why public health was really urging the governor not to close schools. I will say that if you read the governor's proclamation when he does close schools, it's very clear that he states, we know that this will not affect the spread of disease. So he knows the science, but there must have been something else that was pressuring him to make that decision. And I, you know, I, again, I respect the governor, and I respect the position that he's in, and there must have been other factors that exceeded the science in this case.
Thank you for that answer because that did add some clarity.
Councilman DeCiccio.
Thank you, Mayor. And I've got to tell you, I really appreciate this presentation. There's just an incredible amount of panic out there right now in our community, and anything you can do to help reduce that panic is critical. I think our biggest enemy is not as much the virus as it is the panic right now. The over everything, you know, the runs that they have on toilet paper, the runs that we have on our stores right now. Is there a message you can deliver to the public, Doctor, that really helps reduce this crazy point we're at right now?
Well, I couldn't agree with you more, and I appreciate that. And what I want to say is that you all are in the best position to deliver that calming message. And I think, you know, this is scary for people. It's a new virus, they don't know what to expect. You know, we didn't really see this kind of reaction during the pandemic flu because I think people are familiar with influenza. When I look at a coronavirus, I think, gosh, this is what causes colds most of the time. So I have a little more of a background that I don't have that same tendency to panic. But I think the message that we want to deliver to people is that public health has been doing this for a long time, and we know how to prevent the spread of all respiratory viruses. That, you know, I know people are so sick of hearing us say, don't wash your hands and don't touch your face, but that is within all of our control. And we can do that, and we can keep ourselves from getting sick, we can teach our kids how to do it. And then we can keep our older adults and those with chronic medical conditions, we can make sure they know how to protect themselves and check on our neighbors. If they're on their own, make sure they have things to do, things to keep them occupied. Let them know they can go outside, make sure they have food. Allow our people at highest risk to stay as sheltered and, you know, away from sick people as they can. And the rest of us do those things that are within our control. The more control we have, the less we tend to panic. And I need to rely on all of you to do that because you're in a critical position where people are listening to what you have to say, particularly you, Mayor Gallego. You have a critical role in this, and I just appreciate everything you can do to pass on accurate information.
And the other point deals with the closing of the libraries. And I think everybody's trying to do the best thing that they can right now. It's just, there's just so much information out there. It's hard to land on it, you know what I mean? And put a policy in place and a direction in place, I think, is what you're seeing. So when we close the schools and we close all access down, and I grew up very poor, so I know what this is like. So the people that are least able are the ones that least likely are going to fall behind in that education point that Jim was talking about. I am really worried about that. Like, my kids, I've got a computer for them, we're all set, you know, those kinds of things. But there are, I would say, a significant portion of our public right now, and with their children, that have no way of getting this online schooling. Right now, my kids are in class, they're doing online virtual class, right?
Right.
But there are a lot of kids that cannot do that today. And we are literally putting them backwards in time. I mean, if there's a way you can communicate to the state and others, open our schools, I would be helpful of that. I would love to see our schools opened again, especially if they have no impact, not no, but very little impact on the disease. I really believe our children need to be back in the classroom. I'm worried about that.
I worry about that as well. But again, I, you know, I have to respect the governor's decision.
Oh, I think the governor's doing the best job he can right now.
I worry.
I'm very worried about these kids that are out. And if there's a way for us to work together, too, I don't know how that's done right now and how that communication is done to where the county, the state, the cities kind of put together their own policies and figure out, hey, what are we going to do direction-wise as a state and a county? That would be helpful, too. Right now, I know everyone's trying to work it together, but it's still kind of a mishmash. There's no formal, you know, like, example, when we have a major emergency, which I think this is, everybody gets together. You have all the police departments communicating, the sheriff's office, the police department, everyone's communicating. But I'm not seeing it as much now as I would have under a situation like that, like an emergency management group. Is there anything like that, Doctor?
Since you raised the question, one of the things that we've talked about, particularly because, you know, the City of Phoenix is just such a huge population, one of the things that we've talked about is suggesting that maybe the City of Phoenix have a liaison in our Emergency Operations Center. We've been running seven days a week since, really, January 25th is when we identified our first case. We're constantly running, and there's a lot of communication that needs to happen. We try to have weekly webinars with municipalities, with healthcare partners, childcare, schools. But having, there's nothing that can substitute for having a liaison there in the middle of things to participate in the discussions, to kind of carry all those questions back and forth. And that is something that, you know, we're certainly open to and would offer for City of Phoenix to consider.
And my question to Ed Zirker. Ed, not why didn't we, because that's moot at this point, we've got to keep moving forward. Are we going to be committing to have somebody in that room being able to share information from both sides, retrieving information, and also sharing information that we see on the ground?
Yeah, Counsel, I'm sorry, I was just checking. We are connected to the State EOC. I'll look to Milton and the Chiefs about connecting with the County EOC. Yes? Yes. We will absolutely accept that.
So we will have somebody in that room. Perfect. So you have a commitment from us now that we're going to have somebody in the room so that we can work together as a team.
Let me just ask Chief Cockburner to respond to that.
Mayor, members of the council, Mr. Zuckerman, we currently have a liaison to all of the Arizona Health, Maricopa County Health Department, the Arizona State Department of Health Services. And they liaison daily on a conference call to find out what the best practices are at this time. So we have, we don't have somebody physically in their EOC, but that's something we could move in that direction, particularly with the opening of our EOC.
And so, I mean, I think the request that they have someone, I'm sorry, I think the request here is to have somebody in that room because having somebody, if this is that big of a crisis, which I think it is, we need to have people in the room, not just on a call, but in the room to be able to hear and be able to see what the bio language is as well. So thank you for that, Chief. And do you know when that's going to start happening?
We, sorry, we're just looking at each other across, way across the table. We will connect with Dr. Sunshine and her staff and get someone in there right away.
Thank you for that.
If I may clarify, there's actually, there's a County EOC, an Emergency Operations Center that is coordinating the emergency management aspects, as is the SEOC. And then Maricopa County Public Health has its own Emergency Operations Center. And what I believe we're suggesting in this case is to actually have somebody in the Public Health Emergency Operations Center where the public health decisions are discussed. So I just wanted to clarify that that's the invitation. And of course, I'm sure, I'm sure you have a liaison in the emergency operations side. It's just the public health side that I think it could really benefit all of us.
Thank you. We will, Chief Cockburner will get someone detailed to that right away. Thank you, Dr. Sunshine.
That's huge.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. That's huge.
Thank you, Dr. Sunshine, for taking time from your enormously busy week. We do not know what the week has in store, but we know it's going to be a busy one. So thank you for taking time to present to the Phoenix City Council.
Thank you, Mayor. I can't thank you enough for allowing me the opportunity. I appreciate everything that you all are doing to support public health.
Thank you. And now, I think, a good transition from that last discussion to our Assistant City Manager, Milton DeHoney, to talk about what we are doing on the outbreak response plan, including our incident command structure.
Thank you, Mayor, and good afternoon. We have been using the incident command approach to get our arms around and deal with the situation. The phrase that we use is manage through and recover from the coronavirus. The incident command is our way of organizing ourselves. We're not necessarily talking about a place, but how we do business. When we organize ourselves under incident command, we place all of the needed resources in a single structure with a singular focus. In this case, we're talking about people, equipment, infrastructure, our communications approach, and our financial systems are all coordinated to address this situation. The incident command structure was convened on March 16th. We have held meetings prior to that, but the formal activation of incident command was on the 16th. Once activated, it stays in place as long as necessary. So Dr. Sunshine talked about, we are in this for the long haul. If we need to stay activated in order to deal with it, we will certainly be doing that. The incident command is a national model. We have used it in Phoenix in previous situations. The 2014 flooding that we dealt with, the Red for Ed demonstration, the Super Bowl and Final Four, all examples of when this model is implemented. Our group convenes daily. We have a number of departments that are involved. Others are woven in as appropriate. And we are working under a focused mission. First is service delivery. The second plank is sustainability information. And third is employee well-being. Service delivery, we have moved to an online focus, trying to get people to access city services by way of telephone, 602-262-3111, or accessing us by way of the web. We have instituted in our downtown campus a place in the lobby for document drop-offs so you don't necessarily have to go up into a physical department in order to bring documents that's particularly relevant for planning and development, where people are bringing plans to be reviewed. They can just drop those off in the lobby of City Hall. Effective today, the downtown campus, we are pushing for personal appointments. In fact, we have reorganized the lobby of City Hall in the Calvin Good Building in order to implement that approach. It's already been mentioned in the previous discussion that we've gone through some partial closures of the library and the community centers. We are stressing the use of conference calls where appropriate. There have been some alternate hours that have been developed. Keep in mind that there's a lot more to city government than just the downtown campus. We are operating in over 600 buildings around the city. So what we are asking each individual building to do is to make a determination for the best way to execute your operations that takes into account the things that we've been advised to do, recognizing social distancing, recognizing cleaning of high-touch areas, conversations around how people can access the services in each of those 600 structures. With regards to sustainability information, those are things that we may need to be aware of, things that we may need to respond to, or things that we may need to build coalitions to address. Examples of those in this instance, we have established direct lines of communication with local grocers, trying to understand issues they're having with their supply chain, what support we may need to provide for them in getting deliveries into their stores. You might have heard, I'm sure you heard, that the governor has called the National Guard in to be of assistance. Our understanding of their current mission is that the Guard will be involved in stocking shelves and drivers in order to ensure that the trucks reach the stores. We've also opened direct communication lines with food banks to make sure they are up and running and have no issues. Similarly, we are talking directly with our area hospitals to ensure that any issues they are having where we can be of support is also made aware, available to them. And then finally, alternate facilities. There have been discussions taking place out in the community about if hospitals needed additional space in order to operate, what might that look like? There are some institutions that have vacant space that may be applicable, and we're trying to bridge all of those conversations to ensure that we can make our community function as best as possible. The incident command structure that we are under is where we gather the information that we provide to you twice a day for your daily briefings. The third plank of our mission is employee well-being. And under that is where we've developed the leave policies that have been pushed out through HR Director Lori Bay. She will be up here shortly to address some of that. The teleworking option is also under the employee well-being plank. We have, the reason that says limited, not every single job in the government is eligible for teleworking. It depends on what your duties are, what the requirements are, and that is worked through individual departments. Also, we use this area to develop protocols. A lot of the protocols that we are putting out to our employees are developed directly in concert with either Dr. Sunshine or county health in general. Our downtown campus modifications, I've touched on already, and the other facilities that we are doing. In addition to the modifications in the downtown campus, today marked the beginning of Child Day Camp as an option to support city employees. There are nine facilities around the city that are available for employees to take their kids. They have classes. We are observing, as Ed indicated in the last council meeting, the 10 children and one adult in each room. We keep them separate, and there's a lot of cleaning that goes on throughout the day in those facilities. Operational phases. So going back to something that Councilmember DeCecio mentioned a minute ago, our Emergency Operations Center is up. And not only are we operating from there, but certainly within the incident command. So we have moved from normal operations, which is where we were in the beginning. We then transferred to teleworking where possible. We went to partial closures of some of our facilities. We've gone to a modified service delivery. And we have also heard both across the country and in different circles where some authoritative bodies are ordering shutdowns. And so, under our structure, one of the things that we do is try to not only focus on our current situation, but we also try to look at what might happen down the road. So we have been looking at this possibility. We're not here recommending it. We're simply going to share information with you that we have developed to date. It's not complete, but it'll give you, I think, an accurate picture of what would be involved. So if we were given an order to shut things down, we first looked at essential services and support that would have to occur. Meaning that even if the government were shut down, there are a myriad of things that would still need to take place. In order for those functions to be carried out, it would take in excess of 10,000 city employees. So let's walk through some individual departments. The Finance Department, their essential duties, payroll, paying vendors during wire transfers, daily investments, I won't read the whole list. But those things have to happen whether we're open or whether we're closed. And all of those things cannot be done by teleworking. Items that we might place on hold are risk claims and the collections of delinquent debts. In the streets area, streets is part of critical infrastructure under Homeland Defense. Those signal operations, street maintenance, those things would still need to happen. We might place on hold capital improvements if we were ordered to do a shutdown. Under housing, essential functions, maintaining public housing must happen. Issuing rent checks, those are things that we would not be able to place on any kind of hiatus. Community and economic development, and some might wonder, well, why would this be considered essential under any circumstances? Part of the conversation around this current crisis is ensuring that your economy continues to function. Because coming through the coronavirus, we need to make sure that our local economic base is as stable as possible. So CED on the essential side would be assisting with capital location that businesses need, assisting workers that are furloughed, conducting certain financial activities. And on the items that they might place on hold, proactive business recruitment, proactive spec development, and international activities. In the information technology arena, if we're going to be functioning at all, we must have IT support. And those things on the screen are FireCAD for 911 support, the Financial System SAP, the Police CAD, Water Services billing. All of those are things that must be maintained. And then budget and research. We have a legal obligation to pass a budget, and it must be done by a certain point in time. So the work on that must continue. Tax compliance issues that Jeff Barton and his staff are working on, alternative spending, and approval of control documents. So those are not all of the departments that we have and not all of the departments that we've heard from. But we wanted to give you at least a snapshot of the kinds of things that would be involved if we were so directed. And with that, I'll be glad to try to answer any of your questions. We do have the chiefs at the table, and they will both talk specifically about police and fire and what they're seeing and what their issues might be.
Vice Mayor.
So I have a few questions. So starting with streets. Can we just put on here that capital improvements would be put on hold if there was like a national shutdown? Just because here it shows that we're putting it on hold. And from what I understand, we're not unless we're on a real shutdown? So we could just add that in?
Sorry, I'm not understanding your question.
Vice Mayor, yes, what we were trying, what Mr. DeHoney was emphasizing there was if there were a shutdown ordered,
Okay.
then those items in the place on hold, that's when they would be placed on hold. They are currently not placed on hold. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that answers the question. And then when we talk about the food banks, what's the capacity of the food banks? Like, how many people are we able to help with the food banks? And then does the whole family need to be present when they come in in our asking for the food? Or can just one person come in and say, "I have these many people in my household, this is..." And then we would distribute from there? Or how would that work? Or how does that work, given that we're practicing social distancing?
So Vice Mayor, we'll get specific information about families versus individuals. I really can't speak to the internal operations of how they're doing that. What we have tried to find out from both the food bank and the grocers, what is your current supply situation? When do you envision getting more? Do you need us to help you in any way with that? We will follow back up and get answers to your questions and get that back to you.
And then my last question is, when it comes to the masks, to the gloves for our first responders, or for the folks that need them the most, do we, can we get an inventory of how much we actually have? And then are there folks that we can also reach out to get more supply? Or how sure are we on these supplies? And what can we do to help?
So Vice Mayor, we have the Finance Department that's part of our incident command structure. They have been working to procure additional supplies for first responders. We do have a certain cash that's on hand for both fire and police. I'll leave to them to speak specifically about what we're doing. But we are aggressively trying to get more. I heard someone say earlier today, different situation. They were down to like one day of supply. We're not in that situation. But we do need to secure more, and we're trying to. One of the things that we have the ability to do in the current situation is to sort of step aside our normal procurement rules and policies and go more directly to get things ordered, and we are doing that. Why don't I go ahead and ask both chiefs if you will address her question on supplies relative to police and fire?
Okay, Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor. For the police side, we have roughly 80,000 gloves and masks on hand. What we don't have are the sandy wipes, or the sanitizing wipes. And those are on order. We've ordered a million of them, and they should be here in a couple of days.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, Vice Mayor. So the fire and the police departments have merged their caches of PPE supplies. And what they're doing is they're doing they're doing is they're doing a distribution and modeling the appropriate amount to be distributed every day. That way, we make sure we have enough. Currently, we probably have two to three weeks of backlogs, but as Mr. DeHoney stated, that finance is working with BNR in order to get additional supplies ordered.
Thank you.
All right, so I had a question. So wondering where we are at with the leave policies, just a little bit more on what's happening with our folks and sick leave and how we're managing that. And then the second question is around the contractors or people we work with. We're hearing, you know, rumors that half of the airport workers are no longer working. What, I guess, relationship do we have to folks that we contract with or that are around us doing city business but aren't necessarily city employees?
So Councilman Garcia, if you don't mind, Lori Baze is coming right up, right after the chiefs, and she will address the leave policy with regards to the vendors at the airport and really at other places, too. We are in communication with them. Understandably, a number of people are nervous about the situation that's going on. We are stressing the things that you heard Dr. Suddenshine talk about. We're trying to provide a clean and safe environment in which to work. We're trying to get our supplies delivered to the airport. I have not heard in any of our daily briefings from aviation that the majority of their contract workers are not showing up. That has not yet been reported. And if it would occur, we will certainly include that in our daily briefing. That is not to say that there aren't people that are concerned about coming to work, that are nervous because of the death, and we're trying to work through all of those issues in a both sensitive and professional manner.
Councilwoman Pastor.
You had mentioned, and I'm looking for it on the slide, but you had mentioned that there was going to be daycare or I think-
Child Day Camp.
Childcare for, I think, our first responders or-
It's for city employees.
City employees. You had mentioned that it was going to be 10 children and one adult, and I believe what they're saying is 10 people as a group, so I would suggest that it be nine children and one adult.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There are some additional comments that both chiefs, I think, were going to make, so if we could pivot to that now.
So Mayor, members of council, I don't, we don't have slides, so Kara and I are just going to talk to you. We're the underachievers today. So as far as employee well-being and wellness, we all know that keeping us up and running is critical for us. We've been modeling what Dr. Suddenshine mentioned, that if you feel sick, you need to stay home. We are practicing social distancing in our communications center, so we've literally spread them out into two different areas instead of one confined area. We have eliminated or canceled our pre-briefings because we have a bunch of officers together at the beginning of briefing. We're not doing that anymore either. And we are consistently spreading the messaging to our employees. And lastly, we've adjusted the work schedule for some of our employees that used to work 5 eights to now a 4 10, so that they have a little bit more time to spend with their families as well as to take care of themselves. From an operational perspective, we have, whenever possible, we've asked our officers who are responding to misdemeanor crimes to issue citations as opposed to arresting folks. We've seen a decrease in the number of arrests that we've had at the jail, too. The exception to that is domestic violence. If we're on a domestic violence call, we're going to deal with it. We've closed our public lobby at our Public Records and Services Unit, so if people need public records or vehicle impounds or assistance with their alarms, they're going to need to call ahead to make an appointment to minimize the number of people in that room at one time. And we're also suspending fingerprinting services temporarily. We're asking folks to use a third-party vendor because we wanted to minimize that. Our property management unit is also limiting the number of customers that we have in our lobbies, so if you need to pick up property, we're trying to figure out, we're figuring out a way for you to get that, but we're limiting the number of people who are in that lobby. We're encouraging folks to use online reporting whenever possible, so if you have a theft, a credit card fraud, or something like that, we're encouraging you to fill out that form online. And our officers are responding to businesses who are either having a large gathering or are still opening. They're providing educational materials for them. Just to give you a picture of our arrests, Friday, we had 158 today, or excuse me, as of today, we had 95. So our officers are doing what we're asking them to do to try to minimize the number of people in their car as well as exposure at the jail. When the mayor called the emergency order last Tuesday, we've had about 62 calls for service that were educating community members on proper social distancing and other things like that. We've had 39 calls that were COVID-related to our call center, and much like Dr. Suddenshine mentioned, and I'm sure Chief Cockburner is going to mention also, we have a series of questions that we're asking the caller on the phone just to make sure our employees know what they're walking into when they go in. We're utilizing our community action officers and our community response squad to be the individuals that are going to these calls that are either COVID-related and/or emergency order-related. And last but not least, our crime lab has been contacted by the state to help and assist when we do begin the process of testing, that our lab may be one of those sites that are going to be able to assist the state in doing so. So with that, if there are any questions, I'd be willing to answer them.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Mayor, members of council. So my top priority for the fire department is in order to keep our community safe, we have to keep our firefighters safe. So we've provided all the recommended PPE through the CDC guidelines for our members and we updated accordingly. We are continuing to review the COVID-19 information to ensure we are taking all necessary precautions, collaborating with multiple other organizations to ensure we have factual information, Maricopa County Public Health Department, CDC, as well as the World Health Organization. We have regular and frequent internal messaging to our members on how to protect themselves, again, based on CDC recommendations. We've developed a call screening process, as Chief Williams just mentioned, for the initial 911 phone call to try to identify potential COVID-19 infected patients by a series of questions. Do you have a fever, shortness of breath? Are you ill? We've implemented a comprehensive process to identify all potential COVID-19 infected patients encountered by the fire department. This information is then relayed to responding crews and documentation in the alarm room so we can report it to public health. And then we are requiring firefighters to document all potential exposures. We are working to create a plan to allow non-symptomatic firefighters that are concerned about potentially exposing their family an alternative location to stay while, during their off-shifts. And then we are working to finalize a plan for quarantine of infected firefighters if needed. Changes in patient encounters, to date, our members have not experienced a significant change when providing emergency services to our community. Overall, our total calls for service have not significantly increased since January 1st of this year. We've developed a process to capture potential COVID-19 incidents. This process includes screening by our dispatchers, utilizing recommended questions to identify a potential infected patient. We've also created an incident milestone that any fire department crew on any incident can tag an incident as a possible infected patient. This process will be valuable to ensure that we can connect any patient that is confirmed to be infected to our members to ensure they're notified if in fact they have a true exposure. We've begun mapping incidents that have been identified as a potential trend, although at this time, there is no trend at all in our community. Number of potential COVID-19 incidents identified to date within the Phoenix Regional Dispatch Center, as you recall, so our dispatch center dispatches for 26 area fire departments around the valley. We've had 156 dispatches. 90 of those were within the city of Phoenix boundaries. Number of transports of identified potential COVID-19 incidents, region Y were 87, city of Phoenix were 40. And then the number of confirmed infected patients that the Phoenix Fire Department has encountered has been three. As far as firefighter and COVID testing, currently only fire department members that become symptomatic and have had contact with an infected patient would be tested. Fire department members that are asymptomatic will remain at work. And to date, we have not had any firefighters that were symptomatic and have been tested. Currently, our service delivery capacity is at 100% with zero negative impacts to our community. Our staffing levels remain at full capacity. Fire department members are making themselves available to work overtime, extra shifts if needed, if our sick leave rate were to go up or any type of leave were to increase. But to date, vacation has actually declined and sick leave remains normal at this time of year. Fire and PD cache of PPE, as I mentioned earlier, they were merged. We're using, we're allocating appropriately, using conservative estimates of how long our cache would last. And then the effort involves fire, PD, and the finance department to secure more supplies. The overall morale of the fire department members currently remains extremely high. Fire department members understand the importance of serving our community at times like these and will continue to do so. And the planning for possible surge in the number of patients, we have developed a tiered strategy that is scalable to the level of the need, and this would include developing a plan to allow for medical call screening in HQ to prioritize call and to provide alternate support as needed. Surge staffing to place more units in service. We have what we call a storm deployment model. As you know, through the monsoon seasons, we have ladder trucks and LTs and the same crew staff both trucks, but in the event of high call volume for storm-related incidents, we oftentimes will split crews because typically our ladders have four, if not five, members on it. We could use a similar type of model, which would raise our number of units available to respond. Mobile triage units if the system becomes overwhelmed, working with all regional fire departments to ensure consistency in collaborations, not only with our medical director, but all the automatic aid medical directors as well. And then we are working with all the hospital systems. We're keeping connected with those systems. Our public health staff are working as liaisons to all the hospitals to ensure the most up-to-date information is available. Real-time dashboard that monitors hospital beds and availability as well as ER capacity is monitored, and then we have direct contact to hospital POC, point of contacts in all the systems. Other entities that we're working with is Maricopa County Public Health, Arizona Department of Health Services, all regional fire departments, Arizona Department of Emergency Management, and the hospital systems, Dignity, Banner, Abrazo, et cetera. Impacts to the internal fire department operations, all non-essential training has been canceled at this time. All EMS, emergency medical services, continuing education, training has been paused. Public visits to fire stations have been discontinued, that would be right along paramedic vehicular training, et cetera. We've limited public access to our fire administration campuses as well as our other decentralized locations, and then special events, special event permits are currently not being issued through our fire prevention section.
There's one thing I didn't mention earlier, which I'll throw out, it's a good footnote to what the chiefs have indicated. Under the emergency declaration, it puts us in position to get reimbursed for some cost should money be made available. At the very beginning of standing up our incident command structure and actually even prior to that, all departments were instructed to track their cost. Under instruction from Mr. Barton, we know how to do that, and working in concert with the finance department, we will be able to present a true account of what the coronavirus cost the city of Phoenix when we get to the conclusion of this.
Councilman Noakowski.
Thank you, Mayor. Chiefs, thank you all for all the men and women that are out there trying to save lives and on-call, and thank you all for doing that. The other thing is, Milton, so when we talk about the infrastructure and equipment and all that, I know one of the biggest things that people are asking right now, especially employees, do I need to sit behind my desk? Can I work from home? And the other thing is, some employees don't have laptops, they don't have a way to work from home, so can they use their personal computers? And if so, do we have the software to communicate with the equipment that they need to or the servers that they need to here at City Hall? And if not, are we looking in, how soon can we actually do that?
Thank you for the question, Councilman. So we are trying to increase the number of people that are teleworking. We have to look at it job by job, department by department. You are correct, there are some departments where the staff routinely works on laptops, so it's easy to do. There are others that don't. One of the things that we have to be concerned about when accessing city systems from a personal computer at home is making sure nothing happens to damage our system. So IT wants to run a number of checks, if you will, to make sure that that's okay. The other thing that we are doing is trying to determine which databases does your job need you to be able to access, and that's why it comes down to a job by job, department by department. We have had conversation about procuring additional tablets or laptops. I'm not exactly sure where that is in terms of priorities. It certainly falls below the supplies that we need, but it's something that we're certainly willing to look at and work with.
And then the other thing, Milton, you mentioned that we have about 600 buildings and over 14,000 employees. Now, is there a way, is it through maybe emails, or I'm not sure how we can continue to communicate with our employees and just making sure that they know that we're out there thinking of their best interests, that they stay safe, and if they don't need to work, that there's, these are the steps that the city's taking and looking at best practices of other cities.
Thank you. One of the things that we're trying to do is put some form of communication out on a daily basis, whether that comes from the city manager, whether that comes through department directors, whether that comes through our communications office, to keep people abreast of the current status of things we're doing, the things they can do to protect themselves. We do have a system that allows us to send messages to people, text messages to give them updates, but in order to be able to receive it, you have to be willing to let us have your cell number so we can send you the text. We have a number of employees that for their own reasons have decided they're not willing to give their number, and so those are people that don't get the instantaneous text like a lot of city workers do. We would encourage more of that, but even aside from that, we're constantly pushing out messaging. We're going to be very aggressive about that throughout the entire run of this so that employees can be informed, and we're going to continue to take steps to ensure that our workplace is as safe as we can make it.
And seeing that we are one of the largest, the largest city in the state of Arizona, there's a lot of communication from other cities what their best practices are, and some of the employees are asking us, so quarantine pay. If they actually are going through that process, they're quarantined, do they have to use their own sick time, or is the city going to reimburse them some of those 15 extra days? And this is, if we can look into that, right, unless you have an answer for it. And then if any employee is diagnosed with the coronavirus 100%, will we pay those individuals while they're under quarantine, right?
Councilman, since Lori is following the two chiefs, and I guess one of you could step down and let Lori step up, we'll defer to Lori Baze to address your leave question and talk about the benefits that we're offering. And Mayor, we sometimes need a bit of levity in this situation. Kara was the overachiever with the typed sheets. I noticed the chief didn't have, you didn't have any typed sheets today.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. To answer the question about leave first, what we are providing right now is additional leave beyond the accrued leave that employees already have for employees who test positive for COVID-19 or employees who have a member of their household test positive for COVID-19. We are providing 80 hours of additional leave for full-time employees and 40 hours of additional leave for part-time employees in those circumstances. We are also preparing to implement the Families First Coronavirus Response Act, which will also provide for additional leave for employees impacted, and we will have more information on exactly how we will need to implement that later this week. A couple of other things that we're doing as it relates to leave that you may be interested in are that we are no longer, as of March 11th, when the state of emergency was declared, counting unscheduled incidents against employees as far as leave policy violations. So that is something that we hope gives, you know, employees a little bit of peace of mind if they do need to take off, you know, at a moment's notice for feeling ill. The other thing that we're doing is for employees who have exhausted all of their leave, we are- leave, we are allowing them to borrow against future leave accruals. At this time, up to 80 hours for full-time employees and 40 hours for part-time employees, but that's something that we will continue to revisit, especially in light of this new legislation that was passed. I think that covers the leave policy changes. What I was asked to speak to today specifically is what is our protocol for what we do when we have a confirmed positive case of COVID-19 with an employee? Unfortunately, we had that experience for the first time on Friday, and we actually at this point in time have been informed that we have two employees total who have tested positive for COVID-19. And of course, as you heard Dr. Sun and Shine speak to, we expect that number to increase. So what our process is when we are informed of a positive test and we confirm that, we have a number of things in place. And I do want to emphasize that this is what will happen when we are informed. There will likely be cases where an employee tests positive and the city is not informed. It is not always part of the county health department's process to notify us. In most cases, it's going to be incumbent upon the employee to notify us. And we are sending out a communication today that includes that request as part of that message, that if you do test positive or someone in your household tests positive, please let us know. So here's our process. First, we will ensure that the employee is at home or in medical care and not at work. We will start gathering information about the employee, their job title and duties, location or locations that they work in, who they interact with, when the employee was last at work and in contact with other employees or the public. We need that information so that we can convey it and make decisions properly based on those details. The next step will be to notify the department head, the HR director, or my assistant director, city manager's office, and that will include a notification to the communications office as well, as we know that many of these cases are on social media or otherwise in the news. The city manager's office will notify the mayor and council, so you will be informed. HR will also notify labor leadership. And simultaneously, we'll be notifying close contacts of the individual who tested positive. And this will be something that is compiled based on individual circumstances. So we will look at what we can to reasonably identify who may have been in close contact with the employee who tested positive when they were most recently in the workplace. We'll look at things like outlook calendars, work group assignment schedules, and other things that will help us identify who they've interacted with. We will reach out to those individuals first by phone and then follow up with an email as well as the written guidance provided by the county. We have developed a form letter and a script so that everyone receives the same information consistently. And we will also simultaneously arrange for cleaning of the affected work areas that we can reasonably ascertain were used by that employee when most recently in the workplace. The other things that we may consider doing, depending on the circumstances, the role that the employee serves in the city, and also how frequently they interact with various parts of the city, we may do a broader communication if that's deemed to be appropriate. We may also consider a public communication, again, depending on the circumstances. When it comes to employees who have tested positive returning to work, we will ask that they follow and demonstrate that they've followed the county health guidelines for return to work. And those are very specifically outlined by the Maricopa County Health Department. I want to emphasize one more thing as well as it relates to notification, which is that there is really no efficient or effective way for the city to track or communicate potential positive exposures. And one of the things that we are communicating also to employees, and we've discussed with our labor partners as well, is that employees should be aware and that they, and reasonably understand that they are being exposed to this virus. And they may interact with people who are experiencing symptoms and who may be being tested. We have no way of knowing in every case when an employee has a potential exposure. We are only able to inform employees who we have a confirmed positive test result for. So I just want to make the council and the mayor aware of that as well because it is an important distinction. And I'm happy to answer any questions on that or discuss any other ways that we're supporting our employees.
Vice Mayor.
So I had a couple of questions. So when it comes to the employees, so let's just say, because I know that there's not enough tests to test, to test everyone, right? And I understand that if someone has symptoms and they're not severe, they should inform the employer and from there go home until they feel better. And let's just say, you know, that this person doesn't get better, but they're not able to get tested. And they don't, like you said, some employees have run out of PTO time. Are we then supplying that PTO time for the employees? Because I think I overheard that we would let them borrow from next year. But given the situation, my recommendation would be is that anyone that has to stay home because they're sick and we think that they might have the virus, I mean, I just think that we should just, you know, continue to pay their PTO hours. Just because I, you know, like, we just need to make sure, because I just don't want, I just want to avoid the situation where we have an employee that is not feeling well, feeling well, and they should stay home, but the need of providing a paycheck is bigger than the need of protecting, you know, themselves and other, and other coworkers. So is there a way where we can just have a side bank right now for those, for those workers so that they don't have that urge of returning to work just because, you know, they, you know, they're probably the sole provider for their families?
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, we are aware of that concern. What I described to you a few minutes ago is what is in place as of today. As I mentioned, we are working toward implementing the federal legislation that was passed. And that will include leave time for people who are experiencing symptoms and seeking medical diagnosis. So people in that circumstance, if they are trying to get tested and experiencing those symptoms, they will be covered by the new leave that will be available under the new legislation, which we have to implement no later than April 2nd.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Mayor?
Go ahead, DeCisio. I'll wait.
That's okay. Go ahead. It's hard for me to tell who's going to speak next, is all. But go ahead. That's, that's fine.
He respects his elders. Go for it, Sal.
Okay, sure. No problem. There are a couple of things right off the bat. It's like, where do we go from here? And these are more questions toward Ed. So we talked over the weekend, maybe putting a plan in place, getting a plan in place just in case, you know, I think it was very reassuring to hear what we heard from the Maricopa County Director. I thought that was important. But, you know, the hospitals are still saying, hey, if we get hit hard, we're going to get stuck. And we still need that time. We need that period of time to be able to ramp up. And I do know that a lot of the hospitals are buying as much equipment as they can right now. That is, that is clear. So the question I've got, Ed, is when do you think we might have a plan in place to be able to work with the hospitals? We'd be able to take in patients from all over the state if that's necessary. But we talked about maybe opening up the civic center or even opening up Terminal 2 or something like that where we are able to bring people in. And just in case, and I hope we never have to use it, but it's good to have a plan in place. When do you think we might have a plan in place to be able to work with the hospitals like that, Ed?
Thank you, Councilman. So our emergency operations group is in contact with hospitals and others, and we would work closely with the State Department of Health Services and Maricopa County Health on any request. I'll ask Mr. DeHoney or even Chief Kara Calkbrenner if they have more to add to that.
As I indicated earlier, we are in constant communication with hospitals regarding any needs that they might have for additional facilities. We are aware that there are certain hospitals that are on their own, looking for alternative spaces that might be used. And if they were to identify a space, we've talked sort of generally about how might we be able to assist them in getting the facility ready should they want to go to that. We would be prepared to do whatever we could in order to assist them. Haven't had any conversations specifically around the use of a terminal or anything like that. But if the need were to get to that point, council member, everything would have to be on the table. So what we need to get and would get from the healthcare providers is what are the specs that the building or facility would need to have in it? What would we need to be trying to identify and work with them on placement? And our fire department, emergency management, really all first responders would be involved in helping to execute such a request. The other thing I want...
You know, go ahead.
The other thing I should also mention, if we got to a point where the healthcare providers were asking for that level of assistance, that is also a natural tie-in where the National Guard would be asked to assist as well.
So just as a thought, and I know there's, you know, the shuttered St. Luke would be a great opportunity because no one's using it right now. And it already has a lot of the, you know, necessary facilities put together there. But I really think that one of the things we ought to think about doing, at least the three large hospitals that we have, and maybe include Mayo into that one as well, maybe Children's Hospital, just have at least a meeting with them all and say, what do you need from us? I mean, what are you going to need? Let's say this thing were to go ahead. And I think a meeting amongst the hospitals and our staff would be a critical movement. Not just the hospital association because that's on its own, but I think you have to deal with users themselves. On a second note, one of the things in, you know, at least one of my pet things, then this might be a good opportunity for us to move ahead on something like that, Ed. Just filling in the potholes, working at repaving our streets. I think the public, you know, we see, they see a crisis, but one of the things that could bring calmness to them is to see that we're still moving ahead on other things and, you know, really moving ahead at a faster pace. So if there's a way for us to do on a faster pace to repave our streets, get them done, I think it'd bring more assurance to the public too. And plus, they get to see us working. And I think that's going to be important for them to see. So it's more of a comment than anything else, Ed.
Agreed, Councilman, that we have not stopped our paving project. Paving season just started a couple of weeks ago, and those projects are all proceeding.
Right.
So people should see, should see lots of activity in paving the streets.
If there's a way to step it up, I don't know. You know what I mean? I know we have things programmed out. But this is a good opportunity for us, especially now with the traffic levels down so low. I think it's a great opportunity for us to show the public what we're doing. In other ways, I mean, they see our police, they see our fire, they realize we're in a crisis mode. But what better time right now, when there are very few people on the streets, you know, to do this and to really step it up? Is there a possible way we can go at a little faster pace, Ed?
We, yes. In terms of, we're paving as fast as we can within the funding that we have for it. So I'm looking at Mario, but it's a, it's probably a capacity of the contractor as well as our capacity to pay, pay for that. But we'll, we'll take a look and make sure if there's a way for us to expedite anything in terms of street paving, we will do that.
And I guess I would say that we should be cautious because some of the money we use to fund that is sales tax-driven, and we are seeing declines in that revenue source. So I would like to see good numbers for us to make a decision. Councilwoman Pastor.
Well, Mayor, Mayor, oh, Mayor, oh, Mayor, may I finish on that point?
Sure.
The bonding, though, the bonding capacity, I don't know if it's as much sales tax-driven as it is property tax-driven on the secondary tax. I mean, so I think some of it may come from AHER money and things like that, but a lot of this has already been programmed out.
Mayor, Councilman DeCisio, in terms of the, in terms of the street paving program, it actually is sales tax-driven. It's, the bonding for that is an excise tax. And so we do have to be mindful of what's happening with our excise tax. And even with AHER funding, there may be some AHER gas tax, I should say, which we call AHER money, that we also have to monitor what is happening with gas tax collections with lower economic activity.
Got it. I stand corrected. Thank you, Mayor.
The very patient Councilwoman Pastor.
That's okay. Okay, Lori, leave? I'm getting a little confused from the very, at the beginning because my understanding is that, say I was exposed, or there's somebody in my house that has been exposed, so now I have to self-quarantine myself. Why wouldn't I be able to work from home at that moment and not take sick leave?
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor, you may be able to work from home. So provided you're well enough to work from home and you have a job that is compatible with telework, then that would be the first option before leave is required.
Okay.
That's absolutely correct.
Because that, for me, I think leave should be the absolute last requirement or the last piece of then being able to stay home. If they can telecommute, I think it's, it's I think when we start mandating, or I'm not highly recommending that they take leave, that's where another panic comes into play with our employees because they, if they're like me, I count my leave, I count my hours, I watch it, I watch my balance and everything else. And so then I start to say, okay, now I'm going to be out 14 days. What does that look like? Will I have some in the future? You know, you know the game. And so I think we have to really look at that. Because I was also told that for some nonessential employees, if they weren't repurposed, that they were going to have to take leave. And so if they took leave and they, they maxed out, then what happens to them?
So Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor, let me touch on a couple of points there. One, for sick leave, if someone is unable to work either at the workplace or in their home teleworking and they're, they're off of work, then that is the appropriate use of leave time. We do have a very generous sick leave policy where we have unlimited accruals of sick leave. And so we have, we hopefully have many employees who have plenty of sick leave on the books. In the cases where we have employees who have limited amounts of leave, that's where the borrowed leave would come into play. Or in the circumstances covered by the new federal legislation, that would be additional leave that will be provided on top of the current leave that's already being provided by the city. So there, there should not be a case where someone is unable to get the leave time that they need, even if they have to borrow it against future time, which again, should be limited, especially with the new federal legislation. Now, to your second point of someone who perhaps is impacted by one of the current closures, a library employee, for example, who is not able to work but is at home on call and prepared to work if we need them, those people are being paid at their regular rates. They are not being asked to use leave time right now. There are not very many of those employees, but we do have some employees in that situation that are not being asked to use leave. So if you've received that information, that is incorrect.
So is there, are there any employees in certain categories being asked to use leave?
Yes. If employees are ill and they're not working, they're not able to telework, they're, they're off of work, they are being asked to use their own leave if they have not tested positive under the current circumstances. So I want to underscore that again. This is going to change as of next week. But right now, unless they've tested positive and they're home sick or they're on vacation, then they would be using leave time.
Right.
They can use any type of leave that they have.
The normal standard.
Sick, they can use vacation, they can use comp time, any, any leave that's in their current accruals. Employees who are also asked to stay home because of the travel restrictions that are in place, those employees, in some cases, have also been asked to use in place, those employees, in some cases, have also been asked to use their own leave. So there are a myriad of different details around that, and I don't want to get into too many of them because it may be confusing. What has happened is, over time, the guidance from our public health officials has changed as it relates to travel. So what was in place a couple of weeks ago changed last week and has changed again this week. So we're, we're providing guidance as to what should happen with individuals who have traveled and whether or not they need to stay home. But in some cases, yes, if they have traveled to a place that has been recommended by public health to stay home for 14 days when you return, we are asking employees, in some cases, to use their own leave if it was after the March 11th date of state of emergency.
So you're speaking of Tier 3, or I think it's Tier 3 or something like that on the CDC?
At this time, it's Level 3 countries, yes.
Yeah, Level 3 countries. And so what I am hearing you say is if they have traveled to those countries, they have to self-quarantine.
That's right.
At currently. If you've traveled, you're there, you're recommended to self-quarantine.
That's correct.
So that's your self-quarantine. You're saying that we're asking them to use their leave?
Yes.
Why wouldn't we ask them if they could telecommute to telecommute?
None of this applies if they can telecommute.
Okay.
If someone can telecommute, that is always the first option. This is only if they have to use leave because they cannot work in some capacity.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Garcia.
So I don't know how, how long we're planning to go. So if you don't mind, and I'm just going to kind of dump those in my head on, on the different topics, and then hopefully for the next meeting, we can get some updates or if there's answers for that now, that would be great. I've seen some other cities do an alert system, like a text alert system, text COVID to a certain number, and just to be able to get out more information to the citizenry. I think that's something we need to look into, figure out if we could do that. It would be great to get an IT report and, and see where the gaps are or what support we need there. I think if we can look at technology, whether it's Zoom-type meetings, those sorts of things, it'll be easier. So just get more of an IT report. I think I mentioned earlier the layoffs or, or any other vendors that we're working with specifically at the airport, it would be good to get the actual numbers if we could by the next meeting, just so we know what the gap is or what the need is. I think for this situation, I don't know what it would take or if it would bankrupt us, what would happen, but I think in the situation, I think we should, or if we could, add a 14-day leave or seven-day, whatever it is, add to the current contract. I don't know how that works, but I've seen other places do it. Just add more, more PTO to the current year. I would want to know what other fees we're collecting and if there's an ability to kind of have a moratorium or, or see, just to kind of, again, relieve strain from fees or, or, or other payments people might have to make to the city. It would be good, I heard from the doctor and other places, people being worried about housing or being able to, to move people different places. It would be good to, to see a list of city properties. And everybody keeps making, mentioning St. Luke's, but that's privately owned and it's on everybody's wish list, but if it doesn't move, it doesn't move. Is there other city properties that could be used either for emergency housing or for, for whatever it is that we may need during this crisis? We talked about PPEs, and, and I think the fire and, and police have them. I think for bus riders, for bus drivers, even if we have folks coming in through the back, the last thing I heard or talked to some bus drivers yesterday was that they're still having to go and have contact with folks with disabilities or in wheelchairs to help them onto the bus. So I think just being able to get equipment to, to the bus drivers. And I think the, I heard the doctor mention as well, if we could look into 60-plus or different types of drivers to seen, if we could get them moved or shifted. The, it would be good to get a, a report on kind of what's happening with homelessness, specifically around the CAS area, what are we doing differently? Again, is there a property where we can start isolating people to or supporting people to? Also, we've had different restaurants and folks offer, or that they have the ability to bring food out either to hospitals or to homeless folks. I think we just have to worry, figure out voucher or reimbursement systems. Two more things, almost done. Use, use of Phoenix TV. I think if we could get a plan, one of the ideas we had over the weekend was maybe partnering with some of the school districts to, to do some online curriculum, specifically in the mornings for different grades. I can commit to, to continue working on that. And then the last thing, and one of the biggest ones that folks have been pushing is some sort of small business relief fund, or figuring out how we can support small businesses. So again, I don't know their agenda items for the future, but I just wanted to get those out of the way and on the record. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Noakowski.
The Mayor, one of the biggest concerns we're hearing out there is that people that think they might be sick, but they're afraid to use up all their sick time or vacation time. So can we look in the near future on how we can actually prevent that? We have employees that are, that are afraid that in the future, they might use up all their sick leave, and then they're going to have to bank for the following year, and what happens if they get sick in the following year? So sort of what the Vice Mayor was saying, how can we talk about that? How can we secure some funding for those employees to make sure that, right now is the springtime, people are sneezing a lot and coughing a lot because of allergies. So it's kind of scary. You don't know what, what's going on, and, and people aren't being tested. So there's a scare out there. There's individuals that know their bodies better than we do, and even though that their doctors say it's just allergies, they, they know that what, what dry cough and what their allergies are normally like. So I'm just really concerned about our employees. And then a shout out, I just really want to thank CED and Chris Mackey for her staff, really reaching out to all the different businesses that are out there and letting them know that we're here. We're here to help you out and that Phoenix is open for business, and we're going to continue to help you all keep your businesses open. And then one of the things that I know my colleagues up here, we've met with her to talk about a small business loan and how do we can, how can we create that? I think there's businesses out there that want to support and organizations. I'm hearing that there's about three to $4 million that they've raised already for those individuals, those small businesses. In my district, in District 7, we've advocated for more downtown activa- activation, and we have about 200 restaurants in downtown. Out of those 200 restaurants, 80% of them are locally owned. They're mom and pop businesses. So we, as a city, if we're going to be encouraging people to come live and play and, and open up businesses in downtown during the hardships, I want to make sure that we have some kind of relief for them if they can't get any federal or state relief. So just really want to thank Chris Mackey and her staff for reaching out to the small businesses and for all those individuals that are donating those, those monies to create this small business loan. And if we can look more into that, and maybe if there's a way to do some type of a match, that'd be great, and even challenge our state to actually come in and help match that also.
Vice Mayor.
So just, so just echoing a little bit of what both Councilmember Garcia and Noakowski said, can we, can we just have Jim, Jim Bennett come to the next meeting and just give us our report on, on, on the general crisis that's going on at the airport and that we can hear a little bit more, like what's, what's happening would be, would be great. And then I know, Ed, we spoke about this over, over the weekend, about making sure that, that we have, you know, the appropriate tools that we need in the aviation department when it comes to hand sanitizer and, and having gloves and having masks, especially for, for those workers that are coming first in contact with people that are getting off, off the airplane. And then also, hopefully echoing a little bit what Councilman Noakowski said, I, I think maybe also having Chris here to try to figure out what is it that we're doing with the small businesses and how is it that we can actually start crafting that plan together or continue to craft that plan? And she can also give a report or talk to us a little bit more about on how we can be helpful and how is it that we can help the impact on small businesses. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Also want to recognize that the philanthropic community has stepped up, and if people do have resources, probably most people do not at this time, but the Community Foundation and United Way have stepped up, and if you're able to donate, that is an opportunity. We are also at the city accepting donations, including at the south building of the convention center. So those are good opportunities. As a city, I know we are all thankful to our city employees who are doing essential work in such trying times and, and all the heroes in the community, from the pharmacy technicians to truck drivers who are delivering. Also want to say thank you to people who have been working closely with, with my office. That includes the Arizona Nurses Association, the Arizona Medical Association, the Arizona Hospital and Healthcare Association, Dr. Tim Lant, the Director of Program Development at ASU BioDesign, who's been helping with modeling and particularly around the pandemic activity locally in Arizona and Phoenix, Anna Muldoon at ASU, Dr. Popescu, an infection control specialist who's been helping with recommendations, the Infectious Disease Society of America, particularly Dr. Carlos Del Rio from Emory University, experts at Mayo, Banner, Valleywise, and Vitalist. We really appreciate that expertise in this difficult time and people who are willing to share what they know as well as what they have learned from conversations with people in Seattle and New York so that we can understand what has happened in other communities and, and learn from those lessons and, and better prepare. It's been a great partnership across boundaries, and I know the healthcare community is so busy, so I'm grateful for them for, for stepping up. Also, Dr. Josh Starvstein, the Vice Dean for Public Health at Johns Hopkins, who's given me a lot of great data and has shared it with, with other elected officials across the country. Should we go to the phone and see if we have any council members on the phone for comments?
Mayor?
Councilwoman Stark.
This is their, thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank our staff. They really have stepped up during this time. It's just been nonstop for a lot of our, our staff, and I really appreciate it. And I appreciate the leadership of you, Ed. Thank you so much. And you did note that it's not just our staff, but it's everywhere in the city, everywhere in the state. You can see people helping people. You think about the grocery stores, those people are going nonstop stocking, making sure we have adequate food and supplies. I think it's a tough time right now, but I know we can get through it. I do have one question, and if, I thought I saw Inger out in the audience. When the doctor was talking about the parks, she talked about at least putting up signs indicating that we should be practicing social distancing, and I know, Inger, you had, in fact, some information on that. And I know I posted it on my social media, but maybe you could share a little bit about that, because I still continue to get concerns, obviously from, from parents. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, and Councilwoman Stark, indeed, we have been working closely with the National Recreation and Park Association to post signage that has been provided that talks about social distancing if you aren't feeling well, again, the same kinds of things that the County Health Department has also been preaching. Those types of messages, we have posted on our website, but also have posted at trailheads and also at our parks, especially at areas like playgrounds. Even though our buildings are closed, we've posted it there too in case somebody comes up to the building and sees it. So we've been getting the message out and again, trying to educate people. We did send out rangers last night to educate some people in a, in a park that had a quite large gathering and asked them to disperse, and they, they complied. So we are communicating with our ranger staff. We have rover staff also that go out and check on our parks for safety-related situations. So anybody who's in the park tries to educate the people that we come in contact with.
And just to piggyback on what Inger's saying, you know, we're, we're trying to balance people needing some outlet for their emotional, physical, and mental health, which is what our parks do, and we're seeing that more and more, against the pictures of the weekend again, of crowds at places like Papago and others, and, and trying to figure out what's the best way to balance that. As Dr. Sun and Shine said, you can't keep people cooped up inside and to be healthy, but you, we can't have people congregating in too intense a place either. So Inger and I have been in conversation, some of you have had individual thoughts about that. We're open to, to your thoughts on trying to, trying to balance access to our parks with public health.
And actually, we may probably need a briefing. The governor has put out an executive order, and I believe he just declared golf courses as, as essential infrastructure, so cities are no longer in charge of whether they operate their own golf courses. So all, all parks, facilities, outdoor recreation are now essential infrastructure. So we may not have-
So assuming that to be the case, then it really emphasizes the signage that Inger and her staff have been working on, our rangers being able to educate people and monitoring those things.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And if I, and if I can just further, I think any information that the departments can share with us so that we can post it to social media, to, in our newsletters, I think the more information we can share, the better. And I want to thank my fellow colleagues for all they've been doing, and a special thanks to you, Mayor, as well.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor and then Councilmember Garcia.
Regarding the trails, is there a way that a ranger could be, I know there's different trails, but a ranger could be at the bottom of the trail and basically saying, we have too many people on the trail when they come down, or I don't know, put a, they have a 30 minutes to hike or what, what, a wristband, I don't know what we do. But that's way we're, we're not only making sure we preserve our trails, but also making sure that everybody is walking up safely, social distancing, and coming down so then we can allow another group go up.
Mayor, members of council, and Councilwoman Pastor, we, you know, we are continually to work on ways that we can control access. It's really difficult. We have 150 access points to our mountain preserves. Any park that doesn't have a fence around it has multiple access points, et cetera. We have 80 rangers, and so, you know, the, the numbers don't really add up there. And we do have 40 actual parking facilities where people can park to go to trailheads. The other remaining of the 150 are just access points from the community. So it's really a difficult thing, but we can certainly work on some solutions.
Where, where we can get the, particularly, we know the high, the high-volume areas, Piesto, Echo Canyon, Pima Canyon, where we have those high, high-volume, Inger's talked about getting some resources out there. Maybe we can even get some of our non-ranger resources and talking about our employees where their job may be, the, the community center may have closed down. We've talked about whether we can use some of those community center staff to be at our, some of our parking lots to help educate. So we're trying to be creative with that in, in line with what you're describing.
Well, because I was, obviously, I must have been on a, the hiking trail that is, doesn't have high volume. We were practicing social distancing. We had guys on bikes, you know, coming down, and we, we just moved out of the way and kept it, kept it, but it wasn't as packed or crowded as those popular, most popular peaks or mountains. So my suggestion is maybe we, we give out, where all those hundred and some trails and start pushing them to the other trails where they can go hike.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilwoman Pastor, agreed there are lots of other places where people go, and we want to make sure that we also message that we don't want people to create their own trails now. So we have to, we have to balance that as well. So we, education is really the key, and there are some things I think we can work on to make sure that we educate people even more.
Councilmember Garcia.
Quick question. I know we have taken, taken soap out of the park restrooms and wondering if that's something that can be brought back or how is that working? And how do you see the potential of these hand washing stations? Do, do you see that as a real thing that could be placed?
Mayor, members of council, Councilwoman Garcia, we do, we have soap back into the facilities, so that was something that we put back into the facilities. We had to protect them with cages so they didn't get ripped off the walls. So we do have soap in, in, I would say 100% of our locations, but we might be missing one or two, and we're, we're looking to make sure we get them in there now. We don't provide hand sanitizer, but we do provide soap. soap.
Councilman Noakowski and then our Vice Mayor.
All righty. My last question here would be, seeing that we have a large amount of employees that aren't working, that work in the facilities that are closed, can we create some type of call forwarding where they can actually start answering questions from the residents? Our staff is basically handling a large load of calls and they're simple calls. They're just basically referring them to different areas within the city of Phoenix or within different services. If we can come out with just a notebook of all the different services that are out there, or these emergency numbers, or if this is happening, can you refer them to this person or so? And I think that right now, people are just watching television right now. They're stare crazy, going on social media. And anybody who comes up with a new theory, everybody gets scared. And sometimes you have individuals that are, that are elderly, living by themselves, and, and they're scared. So if we can maybe use some of the technology that we have and maybe work smarter and not harder and just figure out how we can share that responsibility with the rest of the staff that's maybe off right now.
Thank you, Councilman. We'd also like to just emphasize people to call our 602-262-3111 number. That's been the number that was set up a week ago, almost a week and a half ago, to, to do what you're talking about. So the more we can push people with those kinds of questions, we've had examples already in that call center, people calling where they don't have food, and we've been able to connect them to our senior services to get food. So that 262-3111 number is, is really our critical one that we want people to, to focus on when they have those questions, for exactly the reason you raised, is it's a place, they can handle lots of different ideas and get them to the right place.
Vice Mayor.
So my last question is, Inger, so can we just put out maybe something on social media, just talking a little bit about the concerns that Councilwoman Pastor put out there? Maybe just being able to put out there all the different trails that we actually have that people can go to? Because I think people usually tend to just stick with the ones that they know. And I know that we have plenty of them and, and maybe this will help, you know, lower the, making sure that we have, that we lower the crowds and that we don't, you know, that we start, you know, being able to do the distancing. Maybe we can just put something more informational and being able to let people know, okay, these are all the different places that you can actually go take a hike. And maybe that can help on, on the crowds that are being formed and, and the trails that are very known and popular.
Absolutely. We'll do. And again, just as a reminder to everybody, we have over 200 miles of trails. So there's plenty of space.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for joining us today and for all of the staff members who worked to provide updates. We know that Councilwoman Stark put it well, but our staff has been so busy trying to prepare the city. So thank you for working nonstop. It's, it's probably just getting started and, and hopefully we can work together to, to do the best we can for the city of Phoenix. We are adjourned.
Thank you.